And we do have reportable action. Okay, so the council has voted 9-0 to authorize a settlement in the matter of Markman versus City of Palo Alto, case number 111 CV210779, pending in Santa Clara Superior Court. The suit involved a resident who was seriously injured when he fell on a utilities box cover, which has since been replaced. The matter settled for $150,000 in exchange for dismissal of the lawsuit and full release of all claims. With that, we can ask colleagues to get settled on dais. Maybe? And...
You're appearing to be missing a couple.
Yes, I'm sure they will come. So, we will now continue with agenda changes, additions and deletions, and we are going to be removing item number nine from the action calendar tonight, and this is the 101 Bridge Design. So I need to have a motion to pull item number nine.
So moved.
I don't know why.
No, it is being removed from the agenda. It's the...
We have a App Places memo. It says, "Following the publication of the staff report, staff met with the Architectural Review Board again to review the design competition process. ARB expressed concerns about the qualified-based competition noted in the staff report. Staff will further discuss the qualifications with the ARB before the council considers initiating the design competition. Staff will bring this item for council's consideration at a later date."
We'll be at their next meeting.
Our next meeting, a week from tonight.
I'm sorry, their next meeting.
At the ARB's next meeting. So can I get a motion to pull this item? Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Let's vote on the board. And that motion carries with Councilmember Burt, Berman and Klein...
Absent.
Absent. And that takes us to city manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. A few items to report. First of all, several in the area of transportation. First of all, the new school year in Palo Alto begins next week, and those interested in the Safe Routes to School program, parents are encouraged to visit our city website at thecityofpaloalto.org/safetroutes and view the police chief's letter to parents about making safer commute choices, and to download the suggested route-to-school maps prepared as part of the city-school PTA Safe Routes Partnership Program. These walk-and-roll maps, these walk-and-roll maps, highlight the recommended walking and biking routes recommended for each school along with estimated travel times. And if parents and students familiarize themselves with the routes now, they'll find that walking or biking can not only be a quicker commute alternative, but that it's also a fun social opportunity that just happens to be healthy for you, too. Some new bicycle improvements at Alma Street and Litton Avenue. The city turned on its first bicycle traffic signals earlier this month at Alma Street and Litton. We are the first city outside of San Francisco in the Bay Area to use bicycle signal indications at traffic signal facilities. You'll actually see a little bike in the signal. The bike signals are being used in conjunction with advanced traffic signal timing features allowing both cyclists and pedestrians crossing to and from the Caltrain station in early release to let them get ahead of vehicle movements in the intersection. The city is also experimenting with new advanced video detection equipment from Iteris at the intersection that detects only bicycles, allowing the traffic signal controller equipment to provide an extended early release only when bicycles are present to help cyclists clear Alma Street ahead of any vehicle movements. Residents will also note new green bicycle markings at the intersection that provide the city's first green bike box, a waiting area to allow cyclists to position themselves ahead of the Litton area traffic, and the new green bike markings were provided by Ennis Flynn at no cost to the city as part of the Bay Area's first demonstration of this, what is called Cycle Grip product. And then lastly, a number of you commented on this, and you might have certainly heard some concerns from the community related to the Oregon Expressway project of late. The county of Santa Clara is now working feverishly to complete the Oregon Expressway project prior to the start of the school year that begins next week. This past weekend, the county completed micro-surface pavement improvements along Oregon Expressway, except at six intersection crossings that will be completed during the week, tentatively on Wednesday, August 13th. At that time, our residents can anticipate isolated pavement work at the intersections of Middlefield Road, Ross Road, Lewis Road, Greer Road, Indian Drive and West Bay Shore Road. As I indicated, we received numerous complaints this past weekend due to the longer-than-usual delays along Oregon Expressway. As you know, some of you who are out there certainly saw that the lane traffic had been reduced to one lane, and these crossings were, a series of streets were closed. The county has sent its sincere apologies to us and explained that the county contractor had equipment failures both days that complicated production and resulted in the remaining work needed on Wednesday. No lane closures are anticipated, we're informed, for this weekend along Oregon Expressway. Pending work after this week's improvements, including pavement marking, excuse me, installations, traffic signal wiring and landscape irrigation movements. For detailed project information, residents are encouraged to visit the county's project at oregonexpressway.info. And as a result of this, I have asked numerous staff departments from police and fire to public works and our transportation planners to ensure that we kind of proactively engage with the county to get more advanced coordination and actually potentially more of a role in the actual sort of decision-making process about some of the timing and staging on this, these projects. We have potential public safety access issues and not sort of being informed in advance about those some of you have pointed out to me as a real concern. So we'll, I'll give you more of an update on that as we move ahead. And then two other items. One's another kind of really cool thing that our library department is doing, which is bringing the film festival experience to you. The city began subscribing to IndieFlix in July. IndieFlix brings the film festival experience home with independent films, shorts and documentaries from around the world, including the best of Sundance, Cannes, Tribeca and more, and offering access to thousands of films from over 50 countries. There's unlimited access 24/7, and all videos in the collection are available anytime, no wait lists, no due dates, no late fees. It will work on a web browser on any internet-enabled device. And to access IndieFlex, all you need is a Palo Alto library card and an RB digital account, which I'm not sure I know what that is. IndieFlex requires a one-time creation of an RB digital account, and if you already have one, you can check out digital magazines with Zenio for libraries. You simply can use that same account. So I think we put postcards at places with more information, and anyone listening can go to the library's website to begin streaming. And then last but not least, continuing updates on Mitchell Park. Last week, furniture began to arrive at the Mitchell Park Library and Community Center with casework pieces being assembled and library staff planning the delivery of books and other new materials this week. Tomorrow, August 12th, 14 pallets or 650 boxes of print and audiovisual items will be delivered to the library, and the library staff will begin shelving the first of many deliveries for our new materials, many of which have been stored for some time. While it may seem like a simple task, identifying the capacity of each shelf, placing notes that tag the nearly 3,500 shelves so that the delivery folks will know where to place the items itself takes two days. We're expecting within about three full days, with 30 staff assigned to the project, we should complete the shelving of those books. How can you and the community help with the move? You will hear about different opportunities to help the library over the next few months. Right now, please check your library account online to be sure you have your correct email address on file. Our library staff want to be sure that the library cardholders get the most current information about new buildings, how to handle holds and other library-related information as we move into the Mitchell Park and Rinconada libraries over this fall. Couple more. The city's solar rebate program PV Partners is expected to expire soon as funding for Palo Alto's share of the statewide rebate budget is quickly being drawn down. Residential rebate funds are expected to be fully reserved by the end of this month. Commercial funding may last until the end of calendar year 2014. The city has offered rebates for solar voltaic PV systems since 1999, and as a result of this program, we have successfully helped install 660 systems across the city, bringing 5.6 megawatts of renewable power to the grid. That's all I have to report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now it's time for oral communication where members of the public can speak to any item that is not on the agenda tonight. And you will have three minutes to speak, and our first speaker will be Ken Horowitz, to be followed by Peter Holland.
Thank you. Just wanted, excuse me, just want to thank all of you for last Monday evening. It was a wonderful evening for our group at Page Mill. My name is Ken Horowitz. I live on Homer in Palo Alto, and it was an opportunity for our members, many of them never, never been to a city council meeting, to kind of express their thoughts about the Page Mill, why. And I want to thank the city manager, and I want to thank you all of you for paying attention to them. And finally, there have been some items mentioned on Palo Alto Online, and also an email that was in your packet this evening. In no way do we want to have you interfere with the decision of the YMCA at Silicon Valley. That's not, was not our purpose. We just think that's a perfect recreational facility there, and we'd like to keep it open. We think it's in a perfect location. The parking is easy, it's very convenient, and we're working really hard. Our grassroots group is working really hard to keep it, to keep it going. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Peter Holland, to be followed by Elizabeth Greenfield.
Good evening, council members. My name is Peter Holland. I live at 342 Grant Avenue, next to the 385 Sherman Project, which I'm here to talk to you tonight about. The property is a three-story new development in the California Avenue area that's currently in front of the ARB. I want to comment on the lack of transparency and fairness in the ARB hearings currently underway. The ARB held a hearing on July 17th of this year, and the project architect and the applicant said they would file revised plans due to concerns both by the ARB and members of the public. The architect requested a continuation to early August, and the ARB said the hearing could be held on the 21st, and that the applicant should make sure that the plans would be available by August 4th to both the staff and to members of the public. Those revised plans were not made available on time and were not posted in partial form to the city website until the 8th, and they continue to be updated as of today. The ARB further set a deadline for submitting any written communications from the public of August 13th in anticipation of completing the staff report for the August 21st meeting. Now, I and the neighborhood residents work, of course, and we do not have the time between today and Wednesday to review the extensive revised plans that are set forth. This is not the first time this has happened with the ARB and this specific project. Prior to the July 17th meeting, the appendices to the project mitigated negative declaration, which total 1,715 pages, were not made available until July 11th. The fairness and transparency of the hearing, when the neighbors of the proposed project are forced to review this thousand-page document and do not get the ample time to review them, is clearly not present. I'd like to request that the city direct staff to delay this hearing on 385 Sherman so that we can all have a chance to review the plans in full. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Greenfield, to be followed by Mike Weiss.
Could I use the keyboard, please? I don't know exactly what it does, but... Thank you. I understand.
My name is Elizabeth Greenfield, and I'm here tonight to thank you for enriching third grade students' civic educations. I have been a Girl Scout since kindergarten, and I'm wrapping up my scouting career with my Girl Scout Gold Award project. And for this project, I created a program for third-grade teachers in Palo Alto Unified School District to take their classes right here, to tour the city chambers, meet one of you, and learn how to become engaged in our community. After going on a similar field trip when I was in third grade with former mayor Jim Birch, I was inspired to get involved in two local issues over the next few years. I wanted to revive the program for others to become active as well. The five classes that I've gone on these field trips in the last two years have enjoyed the experience immensely and learned a great deal in the process. I would like to thank past mayors Yahweh Yeh and Greg Scharf, as well as current mayor Nancy Shepherd, for giving these tours and inspiring the next generation of civic activists and scholars. Thanks also to Tabitha Bochright for helping me to coordinate the field trips, and a huge thank you to Karen Holman for advising me through this whole endeavor. Before the third graders attend this field trip, they prepare extensively. I visited each class to give an overview lesson of government for them to understand the significance of local government and government as a whole. To conclude the lesson, I asked each student, "If you were mayor of Palo Alto for a day, what issue would you solve first?" They insisted that I share their perspectives with you, so here are just a few of their completely reasonable suggestions. Gracie would prevent so many trees from getting cut down. Oscar and Tommy, coincidentally from different classes, want more air shows in the area so that kids that love airplanes get more chances to see them. Sammy wants more people to work on the library construction so he can enjoy the facility sooner. Gopala and Jerry both would like their townhouse apartments, and future developments like them to have larger backyards so they can play at home. And Yuri wishes that people would dispose their waste properly instead of dumping it all in the trash. Opportunities for these students like this field trip are precious for them to learn how to become civically engaged and make a difference in our community. Thank you again for helping me provide this opportunity for our youth, and I hope these field trips will continue in the years to come. Don't be surprised to see more kids speaking at this very podium, for many students like Kelvin really internalize that there is no age limit on who can speak up. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mark Weiss.
Good evening, council members, and Mayor Shepherd. I've been reviewing the revised proposed updates to our comprehensive plan, and I did speak on this related topic last week, but I wasn't as far through this book as I am now. So, our policy C4.7, "Seek opportunities to develop new parks and recreation facilities to meet the emerging needs of residents and employees of Palo Alto." So what I'm interested in, and I've been to a lot of meetings about our Palo Alto and scoping and the housing element, and I'm going to go to at least two this week, I believe, as an observer. I think that the Ventura neighborhood could really benefit from a big new park, and if there is a large parcel coming on, we should, we should try to figure out a way to make that work. And my experience base is, as it happens, I used to rent a house on Pepper Street, which is just south of Page Mill Road, and I remember going to a couple meetings in 2012 about 441 Page Mill, which was a couple little houses, and the developer has your permission and our permission to develop a mixed-use site there. And I remember at the time thinking it would have been more interesting to have a property that was reachable by bike or by foot from the Ventura neighborhood rather than by car coming down Page Mill. And I'm not objecting to the proposal. I heard the developer really did a good job reaching out to the neighbors, and it did go through. But I remember very specifically at the time, a document called California Ventura Plan. And as I've been going to these, our Palo Alto meetings and going through this book, something has happened to this California Ventura Plan, and what I noticed is when we discuss, for example, fries in this, we seem to be drawing maps as if fries is near California Avenue. No, it's really much more naturally near Ventura. And since Ventura, if you follow the demographics, is sort of an undervalued neighborhood, and the property values there are, I think, a million dollars less than where you all live, I think it would do wonders for the park in terms of stimulus spending to invest in a park in Ventura. And as I've been talking around town, there's a lot of traction for this idea, so you'll be hearing more about it soon. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you. Now I'm going to need to have a motion to approve the minutes for June 16th and June 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Let's vote on the board. And those minutes are approved unanimously. Now we have the consent calendar, and I'd like to point out on item number six, we have an App Places memo. We're on page eight of the report and 269 of our packet. A word was forgotten in the term, but that is not, it's not complicated, the motion that we're passing tonight does not need to have that in there. So here it says, "Provides Google with written notice that it does not wish to renew the agreement," instead of "does wish to renew the agreement." So I just want you to note that. I have one speaker for the item on consent, and this is Herb Borak on item number six.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd, and good evening, council members. The staff report on, on the first page says that Google's proposal complements the open-market approach the city council directed staff to pursue in furtherance of the goal for FTP, Fiber to the Premises. In fact, it's just the opposite. It preempts that process. The city's process is to receive a network plan in approximately January, and then after that, go out for bid to seek responders to, for a Fiber to the Premises. And that's the point at which Google should apply, like anybody else, to put in a system in Palo Alto and to see if we would choose them or somebody else. Here, it turns the world on its head and says that rather than people responding to City of Palo Alto requests for proposal, we're supposed to be responding to Google. It's also strange that Google would be seeking Palo Alto property for its fiber huts. We have a $10 million project at East Meadow Circle. We've also extended the fiber ring there and placed a fiber access point at East Meadow. And after we did those things, Google acquired about 200,000 square feet of property there. And it seems to me that's an excellent place for their fiber huts and why they necessarily need the city's property. This decision is part of a project on the environmental impact in California Environmental Equality Act, and since Google's strategy is to seek the areas with the most demand for fiber within a city, they're essentially cherry-picking and taking over the kinds of areas that would be in a citywide, open system. So essentially, if Google comes in first, you might as well not even do the RFP process. If Google was really interested in competition, it would be seeking to place its fiber huts and its system in areas where Verizon has fiber, not in areas in the 34 cities, which are basically AT&amp;T, where AT&amp;T, as well as Comcast, are not providing the service that we require. An open system would be a local access network that's available to any provider in a non-discriminatory basis. This is just the opposite of an open system, since it would be one system going after as quickly as possible the most likely customers, and then there wouldn't be competition. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein.
I will not be participating in item number six since I am a Google shareholder.
I also will not be participating in item number six for the same reason. I'm a Google shareholder. Councilmember Berman.
I, too, will not be participating in item number six because I'm a Google shareholder.
Councilmember Burt.
Sorry, I'm just looking at the number.
Six.
No.
He's not a shareholder. Three count.
Nope. Sorry, I thought I had an issue.
Okay, we're ready? I'll entertain a motion for consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
All right, let's vote on the board for consent calendar. And that carries unanimously with councilmember Klein, Berman and Shepherd not participating in item number six. This brings us to our action items for this evening. The first action item is for the SEIU Hourly Memorandum of Agreement. In July, the city reached a tentative agreement, which is now ratified with the SEIU hourly employees who serve as a contingent workforce for city services. These workers fill part-time positions such as lifeguards, librarians, arts and sciences professionals and administrative support. We are being asked to adopt two resolutions. After the staff report and public comment, I will entertain a motion to adopt one, a new memorandum of agreement between the City of Palo Alto and Services Employee International Union Local 251 for represented hourly employees effective through June 30th, 2017, and concomitantly amending Section 1901 of the Merit System Rules and Regulations. And two, an updated compensation plan for the city's unrepresented limited hourly workers. Staff, can we have your report? All right. Usually we do counsel after the report. You'd like to do one now.
Yes. I'm going to recuse myself from this item because I have a child who worked as a part-time employee for the city this summer.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd and council members. Good evening. We have two groups of employees who are hourly. One is with the SEIU hourly unit, and one are unrepresented. We generally have the same compensation plan, mimic each other because similar classifications overlap between the two groups. So we are proposing a three-year contract for the SEIU hourly, which has been ratified by their members, by the way. 2% increase for each of the three years in the base salary and a 9% increase to the medical stipend. The medical stipend does not apply to the unrepresented hourly employees. Otherwise, the, the deal is the same between the three, so we'd ask you to adopt the two resolutions in the staff report, and we're available for any questions.
Thank you. Quick, do we have any? I don't, I don't have any public comment on here, so I'm going to have counsel, looking to council for a motion.
So move the recommendation.
All right, that's Vice Mayor Niss making the motion and Councilmember Klein seconding it. If there's nothing more, then let's vote on the board. And that motion carries with councilmember Burt not participating. Thank you. If somebody wants to go get him. So our next item is item number eight, which is the Embarcadero Road Shuttle Parking Project. In February, council authorized staff to work on parking strategies to increase, to increase parking options and alternatives for commuters to jobs in our downtown districts. Satellite parking is one concept, and Embarcadero Road east of Bay Shore was identified for study. We'd also like to note that App Places, there's a clarification, which I'll read. Please note that, that the staff... Please note that the staff report has been adjusted to indicate that the contractor would be authorized to focus on Embarcadero Road only and not the Baylands Athletic Center parking lot. If the council wishes to make this explicit in the contract, it could adopt a modified recommendation, which they have written out for us. This concept is part of a multi-pronged approach to address the overflow parking in the downtown neighborhoods and get workers parked appropriately and reduce crosstown traffic. Other concepts include residential parking permits, which become active in January 2015, expanded garage spaces with better permit controls and possible new garage locations, and transit demand management opportunities to encourage drivers to use public transit options and reduce auto trips into Palo Alto. Tonight, we are being asked to award a request for proposals to a consultant for the design and environmental review of the identified satellite parking location along Embarcadero Road east of Ging Road. I will turn this over to staff for their presentation and then go out to the public and then return back to council for consideration.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Good evening, Mayor Shepherd, members of the council. My name is Jaime Rodriguez. I'm the chief transportation official for the city, and I'll be presenting this item this evening. Tonight, we're asking you to approve a design contract with BKF engineers in the amount of $180,000 for the design and study for the feasibility of a satellite parking lot on Embarcadero Road, again, to the east of Ging Road, as mentioned, summarized by Mayor Shepherd. And again, Mayor Shepherd did a wonderful job talking about the various parking strategies that are taking place, you know, throughout the downtown core. I'm going to very quickly, before you summarize, some of the parking strategies that relate around trying to increase parking supply. In February of this year, the council authorized us to move forward with five initiatives trying to improve parking supply. And the item that you're here to discuss tonight is one of those items specifically looking at the feasibility and design of a satellite parking lot on Embarcadero Road. We have, since February, implemented other strategies, including the expansion of permit parking supplies to employees that work in the SOFA district, and those parking permits are available for those employees at the City Hall parking garage, as well as the Copper Webster Garage. And we'll be returning to you in September with a summary of a request for information that we solicited to the private sector over the summer to help us look at opportunities to increase parking supply in the downtown core. You're also going to see later this month, a report on parking technology solutions to help us increase parking supply, as well as in September, get more of an update for us regarding where we could potentially build new parking garage construction in the downtown core. Back to the Embarcadero Road project. The city is, again, soliciting your support to give a design contract to BKF engineers. Before I move on, I do want to recognize Jason Mansfield in the audience from BKF in case you have any specific questions on his contract scope. The project includes looking at the opportunity to build an on-street satellite parking lot on Embarcadero Road to the east of Ging Road's Fiber Place. This is the area shown in red here on this map. The city has just a preliminary design work and figure that we can get up to about 132 parking spaces just through restriping of the road to provide 90-degree angled parking on the north side of the street where no parking exists today. That satellite parking could be supported by the existing Embarcadero City Shuttle that already links that specific area of town or the business park to the downtown University Cal train station. And part of the study will include looking at how that shuttle route may be to be modified to support that satellite parking. We do want to note that the early draft of this proposal that came to council in June did note looking at the option of providing additional satellite parking activities in the Baylands Athletic Center, which is located on the north end of Ging Road. And that is something that we are not recommending at this time. And we did want to clarify that for people at home and for the people in the audience tonight. The city is no longer recommending that specific option in the near term. With that, we have talked to BKF. It doesn't change too much their scope of study to not include that parking workout at the Baylands Athletic Parking Center or Parking Lot, because a lot of the study activity is still the same. The study got studied the same amount of intersections and the visibility scope of work is the same. So we are asking you to consider one of two items here. One is our regular recommendation, which was to award this contract to BKF for $180,000. An alternative recommendation, as summarized by Mayor Shepherd, can include to remove that specific task to look at the Baylands Athletic Center Parking Lot formally, and we can add that into the motion as well. So with that, if you have any questions, we have to answer.
Thank you. And I have a few public speakers on this, and you will have three minutes to speak. Our first public speaker is Robert Moss, to be followed by Alice Mansell.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd and councilmembers. The more I looked at this, the stranger it got. I just wondered why it takes $180,000 to design how you're going to stripe parking spaces and restripe the street. I would think for less money than that, you could just send the crew out and do the striping. So I was kind of puzzled at why we're spending that much for a consultant. And then I saw the letter from Jeff Lewinsky pointing out, as we all know, that the reason that we're looking at off-site parking is because for years, people have been allowed to develop fairly high-density businesses downtown and California Avenue, mostly downtown, without providing adequate parking. And so now what we're faced with is public money spending to provide parking that the private developers have been excused from paying for. And this is not good public policy. We should not be spending our money when the developers are making a bundle by developing projects with inadequate parking. So instead of putting in parking spaces, they're putting in more office space and getting more revenue. I think it would be a good idea if the council took a timeout, just stepped back, and refused to approve any more projects in the downtown area that did not provide onsite at least 100% of the actual required parking. In many cases, the developer has given in-kind money so the city can eventually build parking lots. They've been doing this for years. Not a single parking lot has been built. Not a single garage has been built downtown. The money just sits there. And even though it's earning interest, the inflation and the cost of construction for new garages is getting much more expensive than the money we're earning in the interest in these deposits. The entire city is losing out by this type of parking problem. Another problem, of course, is the buses that are going to be running up and down Embarcadero, creating additional traffic problems. What this does is this emphasizes two of the problems that are the worst in the city, traffic and parking. And I think it's time we step back, stop allowing development without adequate onsite parking, and try to fix it onsite rather than offsite and making people who live offsite pay for it.
Thank you. Alice Mansell, to be followed by Annette Ross.
Hi, good evening. Good evening. I don't know how many of you city council members have actually used the Embarcadero Shuttle or its companion, the Margarita that goes out there. I have on many occasions. I also have a first cousin, who is one of the people you refer to as workers, who commutes from South San Jose out to a Stanford facility near the golf course. He tried very hard to use public transit, taking Via Light Rail, then switching at Castro Station to the California Avenue Caltrain, then trying to take the Margarita or the Embarcadero Shuttle, anything, out to his place of work. He tried that for several months. Didn't work. He ends up now commuting in gridlock down 85 for an hour and a half each way. Because the reality is, the shuttle system that this city has, not just these quote "free" shuttles that the City of Palo Alto runs, but also the companion Margarita Shuttle that Stanford runs, the schedules are a farce. When I go from, say, Old Palo Alto, where I live, out to where the golf course is in Fiber Place, where I've had to go out to have some car work done, I have to budget at least 30 to 45 minutes each way. That doesn't even include the actual transit time in the vehicle, because you get out there and it's not on schedule, you wait and wait and wait, and then the schedules themselves are a farce. Maybe if you work 9:00 AM and always get off by 5:00 and get really lucky with your Caltrain and Via Rail connections, it's useful. But right now, I would highly recommend, as Mr. Bob Moss says, step back. And if this city is going to spend $180,000 of taxpayer money on fixing parking and traffic problems, how about fixing the shuttle system first? I'd rather a consultant get money to fix those than this parking thing. Because what you would then do is condemn, what, about 132 workers to go way out there, expecting them to get on a shuttle to come into downtown Palo Alto, asking them to give up maybe an hour every day of commuting back and forth. That's seven hours a week. That's just not nice. And you all sit here tonight with your parking spots here in City Hall, and I wonder how many of you would have been willing to park your car out at the golf course and wait for a shuttle that never came, because after 5:00, you're SOL. Thank you.
Annette Ross, to be followed by Malcolm Beasley.
Hi. I also work out on Embarcadero Road at Sullivan and Cromwell Law Firm. And I have to say, that lady makes some very good points about the shuttle. So if you're going to go forward with this plan on Embarcadero Road, I hope you will reach out to the people who are out there. We can tell you what the pitfalls are and what is working and what isn't working. Last week, there was an accident, and if you happened to be on the wrong side of 101 and, like, Ging Road, you were stuck. You could not leave. Actually, I take it back. You could leave, but you couldn't get back. And so there was no going back and forth on that day. So the area is not a wasteland waiting to be filled with cars. There are a lot of people out there. Since Stanford has fully populated the tech center, the dynamics have changed considerably. And it requires some outreach to the public that's out there. I know there aren't a lot of voters out there, so it might feel like a different kind of issue to you, but it's very real to the people who are out there. And I'm just asking that some outreach be done. If we can sit down and say, these are the issues. The shuttle works kinda, sorta, some of the time, but it doesn't work all of the time, and so you can't rely on it. So there has to be a higher reliability factor for the shuttle. So that's really what I'm here to say. I know that you're likely to spend the money, so I hope you spend it wisely and you get some good information for it. Thank you.
Malcolm Beasley, to be followed by Nielsen Buchanan.
My name is Mac Beasley, and I'm a 40-year resident of downtown north, so I have watched the comings and goings of parking and traffic in Palo Alto. I want to commend the council on their efforts to begin to deal with the parking problems in Palo Alto that have demonstrably lowered the quality of our neighborhoods. I take no position on the Embarcadero project. I'm here to emphasize the importance of dealing ultimately with root causes. And to that effect, I would like to quote briefly from a presentation I made to council about a year and a half ago. I'll just read the pertinent parts. "An essential piece of the process, council needs to articulate clearly its concepts for residential neighborhoods adjacent to commercial corridors and building on that concept to establish up-to-date standards and norms for parking and traffic that can be used to judge the impact of city's development plans on the neighborhoods." I know you're tired of hearing from the comprehensive plan. "Encourage commercial enterprise, but not at the expense of the city's residential neighborhoods. You can only do that if you have standards, if you have some basis to judge individual and aggregate development in the city against that standard." And the processes we have now do not do that effectively. I don't think you're going to claim they do. But I think that until we have some way that automatically, I won't say forces, but puts council in a position they have to make those balances, that's what you're paid to do, not much, I think we can't solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Nielsen Buchanan, to be followed by Simon Sins.
Thank you, city council. My name is Nielsen Buchanan. I live on Bryant here in downtown north, and I'd like to make remarks on behalf of all the neighborhoods that have a lot to lose and win in the upcoming permit program for the University Avenue neighborhoods. Also would like to talk in terms of other neighborhoods that have equal amount of intrusion threat to them, particularly those next to California Avenue. I would like to emphasize three principles and come back to the quality issue. First, we have a big and growing problem of commercial parking intrusion in the neighborhoods. You've got hard copy of the latest survey that done on the 24th of July. The blocks in red are over 100% parked, just because people jam and squeeze in best they can. The orange blocks are anywhere from 80 to 100%. The yellow blocks are 50%, and the green blocks are 0 to 50%. You've got the legend in front of you on hard copies. The color's all that matter. Any block that is red or orange is basically toast and represents the quality improvements we want to make. Our best data, using your city data from April 2011, the annual increase in intrusion is somewhere between 4% and 5%. So this is a moving target, moving faster than the solutions for added supply and mitigation. The only way out of this is to increase supply and to mitigate demand. It's nothing that you don't already know. The third principle is that we are very sensitive to transferring our problem of parking intrusion to any other neighborhood, and I hope you will pay attention to that as well. The quality assurance issues that Mac brought out can be addressed very easily. We suggest a quality standard of no more than 25% of all the residential parking space be allocated to worker permits. 25%, and that should be scaled back over time. Thank you.
Simon Sins, to be followed by Mary Carlsted.
Hello, my name is Simon Sins. My family owns two small pieces of commercial property in the SOFA area, 1027 Alma and 882 Emerson. I am also a member of the downtown RPP stakeholders group, but I'm not speaking for the group. I just speak for myself here. I really urge you to go ahead and approve the study for the satellite parking. As many of the speakers have brought up really excellent points, and many speakers before me have brought up excellent points. The study allows for all the stakeholders to, for the contractor that's hired, to work with all the stakeholders, to listen to their input. And once that study is completed, it would allow you, in a thoughtful and reasoned manner, to consider all that input and to make the proper decision, final decision after the study is done. So I urge you to do that. The study has about a half a page, or the specification has about a half a page of requirements for the contractor for community outreach. Those are on pages 16 and 17 of Attachment A. And as some of the people that spoke before me mentioned, one of the key elements of relieving the parking problems we have, in the downtown especially, is increased supply. And this is going to be a big step in the right direction in doing that, in increasing supply. So thank you very much.
Mary Carlsted, to be followed by Jeff Lewinsky.
I'm fine. I'm fine, thank you. Mary Carlsted, 147 Walter Hayes Drive. And I will have lived there 49 years in just a couple of weeks. I've seen it all in this town, believe me, since 1965. All I can say about the issue of the parking on outer Embarcadero, don't go there. You've just come off of a city brouhaha over Maybelle. People in the south part of town are very upset still over the traffic problems on Embarcadero. All over town, we have people upset. Don't add another big area. But the Baylands don't belong to just one area. This is the entrance to our Baylands, outer Embarcadero. This is the entrance to our Baylands, outer Embarcadero. It was designated years ago as the scenic corridor. It's beautiful to walk out, to drive out there. And even when the little ducks come, geese come whirling across the street, which they do, one of the things I would suggest to the council is, you've got the solution right under your fists. These parking garages downtown are woefully underused. You can go in there to some of them any time of the day and find plenty of parking spaces. The one that is down by the hotel, can't remember the name of it, but it was behind where California Pizza Kitchen used to be, you can find parking places there. You can go over to High Street all the time. You've got the parking places here, but don't take the scenic boulevard to the Baylands. Because once you've got it, as they say in South Pacific, once you've got it, never let it go. Do not destroy the Baylands, because if you do, narrowing it down to two lanes either way, you will ruin the ambiance and the entrance to our Baylands. You've got the solution right here downtown. Reduce the amount of money you charge for those parking permits and the parking garages and fill them up. That's what you built it for. Don't make the rest of the neighborhoods take care of this problem. It isn't fair. Thank you.
Jeff Lewinsky to be followed by Michael Griffith.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I live in the Duvernix St. Francis neighborhood, where, as you've heard, we have many concerns about the satellite lot. If you decide to proceed, here are four problems I hope the study will address. One, imagine you're a commuter on 101 approaching Embarcadero. If you turn east, there are about 132 parking spaces available, and you might spend time looking for one, only to find none are open. So instead, you would save time by heading west, avoiding that horrible light on East Bay Shore, and parking for free in one of the many residential streets near shuttle stops. To combat this, we residents have been told, well, we can adopt residential parking permit program. But that will be challenging, because commuters will only be probably parking at one end of a block, and it seems unfair for residents in our neighborhoods to have to spend money on permits because of underparked buildings downtown. And of course, we in Duvernix St. Francis are already facing parking incursions from the as-yet unresolved Edgewood Shopping Center situation. Two, will the study look at the total round trip time for commuters who use the Baylands satellite parking? As you heard already, it can be 20 minutes between each shuttle, so the average wait time will be 10 minutes. Next, it takes about 13 to 15 minutes to get from the Baylands to the Caltrain, right next to Caltrain where it stops, and then you'll have a walk of about 10 minutes from there to your office. In other words, it can take over half an hour. If you miss a shuttle, or the first shuttle was full, then add another 20 minutes to that, double that for the round trip back. So what are commuters going to do? They're going to say, no way. They're going to find, again, free parking somewhere in a neighborhood and bike or skateboard to the office, avoiding this whole satellite lot. Third point, how much will this proposal cost per car that you remove from downtown? First of all, the price went up 50% because about a third of the parking spaces were removed. This is not supposed to be permanent, so you have to take the $180,000 plus all the other costs that will accrue and divide that over a relatively short lifetime. It's probably going to be thousands of dollars per car removed. Four, who's going to pay? As you've heard, is it going to be the commuters, or is it going, and their employers, or is it going to be residents who have to subsidize the wealthy businesses that failed to put adequate parking in in the first place? That doesn't seem fair. Finally, while I don't expect the study will acknowledge this, there are more cost-effective solutions under discussion than the satellite lot. For example, we could use that $180,000 to give incentives for commuters to use transit. We'd easily remove as many cars, and we'd be helping the environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Michael Griffin, and if you wouldn't mind, I could like to make a note, somebody's handed me a note. We have pulled item number nine, the design competition for the bridge over 101, if anybody's here to speak to that. That will be heard on another evening. Michael.
Good evening. Unintended consequences are the bane of well-intentioned plans and projects. The trick here is to identify negative consequences and to head them off before the consequences kick in. With that in mind, I'd like to state that in no way, shape, or form do we as advocates of residential parking permits wish to see consequential damage done to other neighborhoods, damage such as we have been hit with. Our goal in asking for an RPP is to restore a reasonable quality of life for our neighborhoods, and this does not mean diminishing the quality of life for other Palo Alto neighborhoods. Nobody ever said that finding workable mitigations to our traffic woes would be an easy task, and the deeper we dive into the details of mitigations, the more we find that the devil is indeed in those details. One item we don't want to overlook is protection of the Baylands. There is no use moving cars out of downtown if they wind up in our parks and open spaces. Those of us involved in the quest for returning quality to downtown residential areas have no intention of foisting the problem of underparked commercial development onto other residential parts of town. Stemming the flood of cars sweeping over downtown north, downtown south, and Professoreville neighborhoods must not mean diverting the floodwaters onto streets further downstream. Now, I'm an advocate of finding off-street parking lots in the East Bay, in Newark specifically, and then using the Dumbarton Express buses as a way to bring commuters into town. Stanford will use a similar approach for using Dumbarton Express to bring hospital employees from the East Bay. Google buses may or may not be a too-high-end of a solution for this kind of transportation, but parking lots at the east end of the Dumbarton Bridge is a concept worth investigating, and the longer we wait, the worse it gets. Thanks.
Thank you. That brings us back to council and for our consideration. And I see Councilmember Klein. Is that your light that I see? Nope. Okay, Councilmember Niss.
So looking, looking at Jaime, there are a number of questions that came from listening to the audience tonight that you may want to comment on. Certainly, the first one would be Bob Moss's comment on the amount of money. The second would be, and I think this is valid, there are lots of open spots in our garage, zizz, our plural garage, and I think many people have started riding around in the garages to see where they are. We do have an item coming up, I think within a week, that talks about sensors and so forth for the garages. So I think we're moving in that direction, taking each one of these steps to relieve the parking situation as it exists. But perhaps you could talk about that and also address the Baylands. So three questions in that. And one question for Nielsen, if I could. Could I ask a question of you, Nielsen, before Jaime gets underway? May I?
I'll allow that.
Yeah, thank you. I'm curious, because in particular, at Hawthorne and Emerson, I'm dying to know, how do you park 112%? Is that on some of the lawns, or is that?
Many of these streets do not strip off, and it's first come, first served. So what happens, people lapse over the curbs.
Can you go into the mic there?
It's first come, first served. The streets are typically not striped off. I don't know that particular street, but I can assure you that right in front of my house, you normally can get five cars. But if the right cars come at the right time and get bumper to bumper, you can get six. So that's exactly how it happens. People lapse over the driveways, and you can squeeze in. People are quite efficient, as you can tell from the coloring, the closer to the city center, the more red.
Right, exactly. So what you're saying is, you counted the number that could be accommodated where it's striped, and this is the number that fits in if it's not striped, correct? Or maybe even if it is striped.
Yeah, I assume so. I'm not the traffic engineer, but definitely people tend to follow the striped markings.
Okay, that was my question of you, and thanks very much. So.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So I'll try, I'll do my best to answer the three questions. The first one, it comes to costs, $180,000 is a fairly substantial amount of money, but we are trying to do a comprehensive analysis as part of this process. The fact that we're looking at potentially doing a lane reduction on the project does have some very specific environmental impacts that we want to have properly studied so we can disclose those potential impacts to both the community and yourself, you know, so that we can make a final decision in the future about implementing such a project. And you want to make it clear that all we're asking to do tonight is to actually begin that study process and begin a design. We're not at the point yet where we're making recommendations to the city council or the community that satellite parking lot should be implemented. We don't know that yet. We want to figure that out. And $180,000 does allow for that comprehensive analysis to be conducted from a traffic perspective. Depending on the type of project that we do build, it could have some additional costs. You know, we don't want to destroy the looking field of the Baylands or the entrance from Embarcadero Road, so we do anticipate this project potentially being implemented over two phases if it were to move forward. One is something that can move forward in the immediate and near term, such as a very quick design that maybe is limited to just some resurfacing and restriping of the roadway. But in the long term, we'd want to make sure the project integrates well with that environment out there. So a long-term project could be looking at things like adding more tree wells, more tree planting, to soften the look of a long-term parking supply if it were to be retained permanently. And so that's part of the reason for the higher costs, because you're trying to accommodate different design scenarios depending how the project were to be implemented. We also, as part of the design, try and accommodate more than one thing. There is a gap in the Bay Trail along this specific portion of Embarcadero Road, so the design does also accommodate that completion of the Bay Trail link from Favorite Place, across Embarcadero, down Gang Road, over to the East Palo Alto border. So that's another reason for the part of the design cost. When it comes to the garages, if I could just change gears there to answer your second question, you know, we are finding that the garages are actually very highly utilized. I would say over the summer, we started receiving complaints for the first time that people can't find a parking space that have a permit, and that's something that we hadn't heard before. And it's something that in our own monitoring, we're seeing a lot of the garages, you know, fully occupied. If you recall, we started a tenant parking program at Lot R on High Street just last, in the last year, and that garage is continually, you know, fully occupied, and we're parking vehicles in the aisles in those permit spaces. At Copper Webster, we see it all the time. That's where we're receiving complaints for the first time, people cannot find a parking space. And we're beginning to see the same thing at Bryant Street. So I think that the concerns that people are expressing that, you know, they think the garages aren't underutilized, I would say that was true probably in the past, but I think people are beginning to recognize that there's a potential wave of RPP coming into and around the downtown. So a lot of people are being proactive, they're beginning to pick up permits. We've released a flood of permits over the last year, and we are in the process of finalizing a current release right now. And so I would say, at least in my observations, and I do walk the garages as much as I can during the lunch hour, they are not underparked. We do have some retail parking spaces open that are available on an hourly basis that we do want to preserve to support those retail operations in the downtown core, so we aren't looking at, you know, taking some of those hourly spaces and converting them to permit spaces. We think right now there's a good balance between parking demand for visitors versus parking supply for employees. But, you know, I think what you hear tonight is true. We do need to find additional parking supply options, and this was one option that we thought was worth moving forward a little bit more, and then we can make a better informed decision as the design and the study is complete. On the technology side, thank you, Vice Mayor Niss. You stole our thunder, but yes, we are coming back to you in about a week, and we're going to summarize for you some of the additional strategies that we're looking to implement around the downtown core to both provide supply in the downtown, specifically technology solutions. We're going to present to you as a council a couple of options to implement both parking guidance solutions, either immediately or over the next, you know, several months, in combination with potential access and revenue controls of the garages. And those, the combination of those two technologies will allow us to introduce solutions that don't exist today, specifically the option of trying to provide transferable permits amongst employees. One of the things that we've heard a lot of from employers is that their employees cannot get permits fast enough, and I would say that is a common recurrent theme that I've heard from a lot of people in my little over four years here, and it's a technology limitation today. We're limited in the amount of permits that we, and how we sell permits, because we have our garages publicly financed through public bonds, and so we cannot privatize those permits to employers directly, so they need to remain within the name of the employee that is using them. But we want to introduce options, you know, that take advantage of access and revenue controls, to allow an employer to move a permit to an employee that is in the office today when the employee that holds it is working either offsite or working at home. And so those technology solutions just don't exist today. I think that as we move forward over the next several months, those will be a nice option for our community. I did want to also note, Mayor Niss, in your question to Nielsen, the data that he has was data that we provided, so the number of parking spaces that we felt could be possibly used on a street was something that we put together several years ago. And Nielsen is correct. What happens is just that, you know, under the right conditions, people will squeeze in multiple cars in an area where there should be less, but that's part of a balance in the community, you know? Some people really think that we should do parking tips, or the stripes, as Nielsen referred to, and those work really well in the downtown core, but they really take away the quality of a neighborhood when they're strapping a residential street. And so I think that's something that we'll have more discussion about over the coming several months, but we haven't implemented those. As a result, we end up with these 112, 117% spaces.
So, I mean, because unless it's an urban legend that there are garages that are underparked, because we hear it on a regular basis, have you changed something about the permits that we're not aware of?
We've done a couple of different things.
You've released more permits, I'm pretty sure.
That is the number-one thing that we've done differently. We have recently released a lot more permits. That was something that we heard a lot of requests from the city council on, as we've talked about the parking discussions over the last couple of years. So yes, we've definitely increased those thresholds. We actually haven't even reached the thresholds that we set, though, because people just can't find parking spaces anymore. And so, you know, we have caps that we aim for, we're slightly below those caps still, but, you know, at the same time, having a permit isn't a guarantee of finding a parking space, and we're trying to find that balance as we're implementing the release of the permits. But again, we do need to address the supply issue.
And so if we were to get to our sophisticated method of sensors in some way, where we would know how many spots there actually were in a building, which, you know, many cities actually do, that, I think, would make, that would go a long way toward resolving it, so that when you start into a garage before you twirl all the way to the top floor, it's good to know, is there something, do you anticipate it'll be there when you get there? And I think that's part of the issue right now, is many people don't go into the garages not knowing whether they're going to find something when they finally, you know, go all the way up or they go all the way down.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Niss. I mean, parking guidance systems, which is the technology of which you're referring to, I think when we come back to you on the 18th, we're going to have some really exciting news that you're all going to be really happy about, about pilot projects we've been implementing around the downtown.
We'll be waiting with bated breath.
I would say that nothing limits us from doing something like that on Embarcadero Road, though, because that was something that one of the people in the audience mentioned today. By all means, if we were to implement a project like this, it would make complete sense to include some type of a parking guidance system solution to that as well. And over the next month, you're going to hear a lot of technology solutions that staff will be recommending to you that include the dissemination of parking information, including occupancy.
And while I haven't heard of any specific parking apps, I'm sure something is available.
We've got stuff in the works. Let me just say that. It's my teaser. We've got stuff in the works.
Okay, thanks very much.
Councilman, Vice Mayor Niss, if I just might add to that, I think in the near-term parking guidance systems, obviously, will help people maybe make more of a choice to park in the garages, but I think that the key change is going to be when RPP is instituted and the supply immediately shifts, folks will be forced, and that technology will just make it faster to find spaces that all of the, all of the different initiatives that the council has asked us to explore are also predicated on the fact that there is not or will not be sufficient capacity in our existing garages. So even this discussion we're having here, what we're talking about on TDM, ultimately says, once we shift the balance in the neighborhoods back into the kind of commercial course and those sort of things, clearly, we're not going to have enough capacity in our existing garages.
Thanks.
Vice, Councilmember Price.
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate the comments by the public. I have several questions regarding items raised in the staff report. The first question is, the, in the elements for the study, I think it'll be really great to get the results in terms of environmental assessment and the design elements. terms of environmental assessment and the design elements. My question relates to page eight. In anticipation that the transit stops will have, will have shelters, which is great, because many times transit users are not protected from the, the elements. So the study anticipates they'll have multiple uses, such as ride-share stations, bicycle service stations, and park-and-ride activities. If you could just give us two or three sentences expanding on that, these sound like good ideas with merit, but if you could just give us a couple of additional details, that'd be great.
Thank you, Councilmember Price. Just very quickly, again, it depends how we roll the project. There's, there's a quick project we can do right away, where we just resurface the street, restripe it, just cram as many parking spaces as we can to that area. That is one option. We do want to, though, again, be context-sensitive to that, the fact that we are proposing a project within the Baylands or surrounding Baylands area. And so we want to make sure that with the longer-term design, if that were to be implemented, that it's supporting multiuses. And specifically, we want to include and support bicycle activity, which you know is extremely heavy out to the Baylands on weekend, recreational activities. And that's where the bicycle service stations are coming in. The things we're looking at in general, all over Palo Alto, as part of Bicycle Boulevard programs. We don't want to exclude an opportunity to get a really low-cost type of improvement that people can take advantage of as part of the project. Shelters, I think you hit it on the head. You know, if we want to encourage people to, to take transit and use facilities, they need to be accessible, and they got to be comfortable. And that's something that we think will go a long way if a project this would move forward, and encouraging people to, you know, stay at those shelters, you know, during wet weather conditions, and as well as just supporting under a hot summer day.
Thank you. I do notice in the staff report that this project will be funded through existing capital improvement program. So this is not a new, a new, not previously identified funding source. So that's, that's good. Now, the other question I have is on the Embarcadero, Embarcadero Road shuttle project. I am making the assumption that you have been looking at the operations of that shuttle, as well as the Marguerite, in the recent months. Is that correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Price.
Okay. And I noticed that you have an RFP out to ask for proposals to deal with headway operations and pricing for such an operation. Now, if the proposals have been received, have you mentioned in the staff report, or did I miss it, how quickly will that RFP process and the results of that be available? Will it be available by the end, by the fall of 2014, so that it will be available when this design and environmental work is completed if we make a decision tonight to move forward? Is that the goal?
Actually, we're much faster than that. We, we didn't do an RFP process. We went directly to hire a consultant. We hired a consulting firm called Fair and Peers to analyze our existing shuttle program, to analyze proposed shuttle routes that we were considering implementing through a separate RFP process that we did earlier in the year. And we actually are expecting that report Wednesday of this week, and the city council will, I was actually thinking back, the Plan and Transportation Commission will receive an update on that likely in early September with the goal of trying to get to council by late September.
Okay, so the results of that, sort of operations and pricing for a revised Embarcadero shuttle, great, will be available. That's terrific. And, let's see, there was another, I think those, those cover my main points. And this looks like an exciting project, and it will be great to have additional information so we can be more informed in terms of prior to taking any further action. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Klein.
Thank you. A few questions and comments. Are we limiting ourselves to questions, Madam Mayor?
No, this is for questions and actions.
Okay, good. Thank you.
The affairs of council, yeah.
All right. First, there's been, if I recall correctly, we had some discussion about the potential use of some of the spaces at the golf course. But that seems to have gotten lost somewhere. It was thought particularly as a temporary matter that there would be excess spaces at the golf course, which are already striped and EIR and everything else because of the golf course construction or reconstruction. So are we still considering that, or it got lost, or turned out to be not feasible, or what's the story?
Councilmember Klein, we have not explored the option of looking at the golf course as a, as a temporary parking lot facility. We can definitely do that. We, at the time, we just knew there was a lot of work going on at Public Works regarding what's going to happen long-term with the golf course in general.
I'm not talking about the golf course. I'm talking about the existing golf course parking lot.
That's what I'm referring to, given the fact that they're analyzing that specific project. We didn't want to impact their environmental impact report process that they're going through because the use of those parking spaces influence the long-term operations of the golf course itself. So to throw in another use in that existing parking facility may impact any environmental studies that have been taken place regarding how that parking lot would be used to support activities at the golf course.
I thought we were all through with the IR on the golf course.
Yeah, but if we change the proposed use of that parking supply from something other than what it was analyzed for in the EIR, we would have to reopen that environmental assessment of the, of the golf course.
I'm having trouble with being persuaded by that for two reasons. One, the report's done. Second, you could easily cordon off the golf course parking lot at a very, very low cost, so that you could readily determine what uses for the golf course and what uses for others. But Mr. Keen, you have something?
Yeah. So, well, I just want to add on. You made the first point, which is the EIR for the golf course is finished, so I don't think we have that issue. I do think it's a little more complicated of an issue, figure out how many spaces could potentially be available in the existing lot with the existing golf course operation. Nonetheless, sometime in the near future, we're going to close the golf course for 16-month period.
Yeah.
In which case, almost all of that lot ought to be able to be available, certainly for a 16-month period. In many ways, what we are looking at here is what is a potential bridge or shorter-term option until other supplies come online, so.
Well, I really think that we're missing a bet here, particularly since a lot of my other questions are premised on the idea that, at least, I had thought that this is a short-term solution, maybe with some potential for a long-term solution, but primarily as a short-term solution, particularly when we implement the RPP program and before any new parking garage downtown would be completed. So I'm still looking at it as a, as a short-term, by short-term. I mean, probably up to three or four years, but still, short-term, and I'm concerned about that. The, similarly to the golf course in a certain way, you know, Councilmember Holman and I have frequently brought up the idea that can't we make better utilization of the parking spaces that exist in privately-owned parking lots downtown? And we had talked about the possibility of putting out an RFP to see if there were any private owners who were interested in leasing out or some way of making some of their, their spaces available to the public. Where are we on that?
We actually have tried monitoring, if I remember correctly, there were about 12 private garages or structures within the downtown for, that support operations at sites where those garages exist. Our challenge is that they're usually blocked off, they're usually gate-controlled, and that's a security benefit that comes to the people that lease those buildings. People want that secured parking for their employees. And we definitely, with new projects coming online, we explore that opportunity to do things like public parking, and we were successful with the new one-to-one Litten Gateway project at the corner of Litten and Alma. But we have not looked into issuing an RFP because, and the people that we have talked to, it just hasn't been an interest because, again, those parking spaces are leased as part of agreements between the leasers and the owners of the buildings to have that privatized parking for those tenants' use.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Klein, just a note here, please. This agenda item is agendized for the satellite parking item, and a certain amount of discussion of related items is, of course, permissible. But if the council wishes an extended discussion of parking solutions in general, it would be best to agendize that, that item for future meetings.
Well, fair enough, which gets me to, I think, what was going to be my final question, which is, I mean, you mentioned that next week we have various parking issues on the agenda, correct?
That's correct, Councilmember Klein.
So why didn't we, why didn't we lump this one in with those as well?
That's, that's what I was just asking our Director Gilman, if we could do that.
Well, in light of that, I will move that we continue this item to next Monday to be considered with other parking items.
Mayor Shepard, if I can respond to the question. We had planned on next week's agenda to give you the similar, a similar status report on all of the parking initiatives, but to focus the discussion on garage technologies, which is itself a complicated topic. There's nine different recommendations we've received from a consultant related to technologies and to increasing the utilization of existing structures. So if you remember, back in February, we, we did bring council an item with all of these parking strategies in one item. It was a long evening. We felt out of, coming out of that evening in February, we got the council's direction to bring these things back as they were, as they were ready. So apologize if it feels disjointed to you, but our intention was this evening to bring you this proposal for a design and environmental review of satellite parking. Next week, we would bring you an update on the status of the garage technologies and get your direction to proceed with the parking guidance system and access and revenue controls. And then our plan is to come back in September with a more robust discussion of supply enhancements, including potential for public-private partnerships, and our recommendations for siting of public parking garages. That was a discussion, if you remember, we also started in February.
I'd also like to remind council that this was a pulled item from consent a few weeks ago. So this is the evening that we're hearing this item that was pulled from the consent calendar. So you have a motion on the floor to continue this item, and you had a date. Did you, did I hear you say when?
Second one next week. I, I, yes, my, the motion included to next Monday.
So, and it is seconded by Councilmember Schmid. Can I find out if this is going to be possible, Jim?
Well, so, councilmembers, so right now, the agenda for next week, I know, is programmed as, there's a number of, some close session items also, is anticipated, ending at 11:30. And you will note that we often underestimate the schedule for the meetings. Typically, I'm always really excited for the council to move something off an agenda one night, just since there's a little chance we might get out a little earlier. But, you know, clearly, we have a systems problem here, and we need a system solution. So that's certainly part of the intent of the motion, as I understand how these things are, are interlinked. There also, though, does seem to me, there is something of a standalone aspect to this yes/no on this particular item. And, you know, I could plead for a little bit, unless you would repeat everything next week, are we able to at least discuss and out all of the questions and concerns that you might have on this to be able to save us some time? But again, I wouldn't want you to do that if we're going to go over all of that all over again next week. Thanks.
So Councilmember Klein, you have a motion. Would you like to speak to it?
Yes, I just, the city manager, I think, has used some good language. This is a, a systems problem. It has lots of different aspects to it, and I think this is one that's relatively minor, and I think it's, it's out of sequence for us to be considering it until we hear some of these other things, or hear them all together. I mean, just to pick one example, if we hear about some technology that could add the equivalent of several hundred spaces, that would give me pause before I could vote for this. On the other hand, if nothing comes up next week that looks like it's a viable, short-term solution, then I might be more favorable. But anyway, I think that hearing them all together makes sense to me. That's why I moved to continue.
Councilmember Schmid, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I think it makes sense to discuss this not as a separate item, but as part of an overall view, maybe even more particularly during that time. Let's look at the big picture. The development cap evaluation just came out and told us that in the downtown area, we have 3.2 million square feet of non-residential square footage. And under our rule that there is one parking space for every 250 square feet, it means there should be 12,600 parking spaces in the downtown. As of last year or this year, there are 4,800. That's about 30% of the need. Now, that is a problem, and it's a chronic problem that has been with us for 35 years. We are talking here about adding 132 parking spaces. That's 1%. That does not solve the problem. It deals with the periphery. So let's talk through, you know, just the basic numbers of who benefits and who pays. Well, obviously, property owners in the downtown benefit. 132 parking spaces downtown, they would be charged about $8 million, $60,000 per parking space. So to put it out in the Baylands saves someone $8 million. That's, you know, a good deal. We ought to think of that. But the people saving the money are the property owners.
I'm sorry, Councilmember, this is to be continued, and I guess I would like to get better clarification. Would you like to continue to take comment tonight in the event that, so that we don't have to repeat comments for, when we do take it up?
Yes, I thought, I thought the city manager suggested that we give our comments.
Right. So this is speaking to the motion to continue, but you would like to hear comments tonight. Is that what you're saying? Jim?
Well, not me. I think there's, there's, there's an alternative of moving ahead and considering making a decision on this, which could be at the end, you say, well, we don't want to take it up, or whatever. Or you just, right now, continue it till next week. Or at a minimum, I was saying, for meeting management, as much as anything, are we able to do a fair amount of the work on this item that would have to be done next week anyway, and still be able to put those things together as a sort of trade-off? I mean, there are other suggestions that have been made that are also trade-off decisions that would say, let's not do this, let's do something else. They would not automatically come up as part of the parking technology issue. And I would just throw something out with, I'm being really playing loose with the numbers here, because they're all over the map about the, the parking gap, you know. But so I'll take one of the medium-range numbers that has sort of said we've had maybe a 1,600 parking deficit or, in neighborhoods. And if we were to take, Nielsen Buchanan mentioned 25% for workers, so that's 400 spaces, so that's 1,200 parking space deficit. If we go to RPP parking, we're going to have 1,200 parkers moving out of the neighborhoods. There's no way that we have, in my view, sufficient free capacity in the buildings, parking garages as they exist right now. You did award the TDM contract, so hopefully we can figure out how to sum up that. This adds 132. And sometime, probably in the fall, we'll be bringing back responses to the proposals we put out for the public-private parking garage, which, if you liked any of those, that will take some time. So I, I think that we've always acknowledged from their very beginning, there is going to have to be a series, and probably a cascading, series of choices that you're going to make to try to tackle this problem. There isn't one nice, neat solution, so.
Okay, I guess what I'm trying to get to is whether or not we want to continue to just continue tonight, or take up all the questions that we have. I have four lights on that have not addressed this at all. So yes, Councilmember Sharf.
I mean, our, our procedures are fairly clear, that you have to debate the motion as to the propriety of postponement and the time set. So I think if we're going to have this motion, which is on the table, it's got a second, we have to debate it as to the propriety of postponement and the time we have to debate it as to the propriety of postponement and the time set. We can't be doing anything else.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to go ahead and clear the lights, but keep these orders for people who have not spoken, so I have your lights. I haven't cleared the lights yet, so, hang on. Okay. Karen, you made it first, but just a second, yes. Director Gittleman.
Thank you, thank you. If I can just offer one comment, I would not want the council to continue this item to next week and then be frustrated about what we're able to provide. We will not be able, we were not planning on and will not be able to provide next week a comprehensive analysis of supply, deficit, all of that. What we are queued up to provide next week is an assessment of parking garage technologies that may assist us increasing the occupancy of existing spaces and better utilizing our existing supply. So our thought was, today, a modest, as Councilmember Schmidt points out, really modest, potential increase in supply, if all the design and analysis work happens correctly. Next week, detailed discussion of technologies and using our existing supplies to better ends, and then later in September is when we would come back with a more holistic discussion of supply, the deficit we're trying to meet, and what the strategies are to increase supply in downtown. So I just wanted to put that out there before you...
Thank you. Let me go, and we'll be speaking to the motion now. Have you finished with your second?
No, if I could just make a couple comments, I think the city manager said that the way to approach this is a tiered way. Here are some of the bigger things, here are some of the smaller things. My point is, the satellite parking is a small thing, and rather than tonight impose the burden on new players, people who use the Baylands, let's look at that tiered approach and see if we can find...
That's not what the motion is, though. The motion is to continue it to next week.
That's right, so this should be continued to next week.
So you want to continue it to next week, which will not be addressing the tiered plan, the way I understand it. So I'm not sure, so, we're going to move on. Councilmember Holman.
Yes, thank you. Speaking to the motion, I appreciate the intention of it, and appreciate some of the things that have been brought up in relation to this motion. I won't, however, be supportive of it, and I'll get to the reasons why here in just a second. A few things. One is, I find it a bit frustrating that we've spent a lot of time on this particular aspect, because it's a high cost per space in an environmentally sensitive area, and even if we take the Baylands Athletic Center parking lot off the table, it doesn't mean people won't park there, because it's just another form of spillover, right? There are concerns that I think are valid concerns about how we're going to transfer a problem from one neighborhood to another, and the neighbors who live, I mean, I lived in Professoreville for a long time. I certainly understand, it's gotten worse since I lived there, but I understand the parking problems there. So, you know, I'm not insensitive to those concerns at all. I have many, many friends that live in both downtown north and Professoreville University South, but I don't think anybody in this community wants to transfer their problems to another part of the town, and speakers have mentioned that. There is a smorgasbord of ways that we can address these problems. I'm hoping that next week, well, I'll get to that when I make my own substitute motion. The reason that I think this also shouldn't be considered is, when you look at the staff report on page four, or packet page 427, it talks about policy implications, but it mentions nothing from the comprehensive plan that addresses protections for the Baylands. It pulls out nothing from the Baylands Master Plan that talk about protections of those sensitive areas. So we're supposed to be protecting those areas, and in just a second here...
Yeah, Councilmember Holman, this is just about continuing the item at this point and speaking to this particular motion.
And I'm saying, actually, I'm saying why I'm not supporting the standing motion, and I'm going to make a substitute motion in half a second here. So my substitute motion is going to be to eliminate from consideration the Embarcadero Road Satellite Parking Lot Project, and...
Point of order, Madam Mayor, I think that you cannot have a substitute motion for a motion to continue.
He's correct.
We've stumped the city attorney.
So we have to vote the motion up or down?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, and that's what I'd like to speak to right now.
We don't know yet, she's looking.
Right.
Mayor Shepherd, could I respond to a couple of those comments while the city attorney is looking into the procedural issue? I'll try and take a few minutes.
As long as we, I'd really like to try to stay near on this particular, if we're going to continue, we're going to be taking this up next week, and we will go all through this again, so I would like to see if this is procedurally, if we can go ahead and decide whether we should continue with the whole thing this evening.
Okay, so all the comments I have been made, have been making then, are reasons why I will not be supporting the motion to continue.
Councilmember Scharf.
I also won't be supporting the motion to continue. I think that we have a very jammed schedule next Monday. I believe it goes to 11:30, something like that. I think this has a standalone issue in some ways. There's a shortage, 132 spots, actually, is quite a lot of spots. I don't think there's any indication, I think the city manager made it fairly clear, that what we discuss next week is not going to solve the issue, and technology alone won't solve it, so I see no harm in looking at this now. I also think the public's here for this issue now, and this is the issue they came to speak on, and I think we should honor that and go ahead and hear this and get it done.
Councilmember Berman.
I'll just second everything that Councilmember Scharf just said, I won't repeat it, but I won't be supporting the motion. I think we should handle this issue tonight.
Councilmember Price.
Ditto with Councilmember Berman and Councilmember Scharf, I agree with all their comments. I will not be supporting the...
Vice Mayor Ness.
Ditto with one comment, we've got to stop letting the perfect get in the way of the good again, and we're not going to be able to swallow everything whole in one night. We really do have to take it segmentally, so I'm not supporting this.
Councilmember Burt.
So I have a clarifying question, actually, two, for the maker. Was it the intention of this motion that we would have no more councilmember questions or comments tonight, or that we would not take up action tonight?
That we would not take up action tonight.
Great, that's important. Now, I won't be here next week, so that's important to me. Second, given what Director Gittleman explained about next week being a more limited discussion on parking, and late September being the holistic approach, I appreciate that some of your comments basically indicating this is perhaps both contingent, the decision on this may be contingent on some of the holistic elements, as to whether we see there are adequate solutions that might change our thinking on the vote, and this is also probably more contentious than some of the other solutions we're going to look at. So then, in that context, my question is, based on what she explained, are you still, within your motion, wanting to stay to next week, or that subsequent parking meeting on the holistic approach?
Well, that's a good point, Councilmember Burt, but we can all count to five, and there are more than five councilmembers who want to move forward on this tonight, so I would suggest that we stop talking, vote, and move on to the main issue here.
Well, it might influence councilmembers. We have councilmembers who keep open minds and listen to each other's arguments, and they might even think differently in a broader context. So my question is, you still sticking to necessarily a date certain of next week, or would it be potentially the following, when we have the holistic conversation?
I want us to move on, but if I had my druthers, yes, I think that having a one meeting devoted to a variety of these solutions, so that we could do a cascade-type approach, as I think Councilmember Schmidt has described, where we look first at the ones that have the most impact and only get down to lower-level ones after we know that, would, seems to me, to be a more sensible approach.
Yeah, but my question is, would that meeting that you just referred to be next week, or that later meeting in September?
Having heard Hillary speak, I think it might make more sense to be in September, but...
Okay, so if you modify your motion to reflect that, then you have one more vote.
Okay, I'll do that, I'll feel a lot better with a 6-3 vote than a 7-2.
We'll see. Okay, so I will say that in the merits of this motion, I think that this action is contingent on the other considerations that we're going to be making, and that this particular item is more contentious than the other actions, and therefore, I think it would do us right to have a discussion tonight, and then defer it to the later September holistic parking meeting.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote. And that motion fails, clairvoyantly. Hang on, I can't. It's 6 to 3, and I want to go ahead and call out who did vote for this. It was Burt, Klein, and Schmidt. I can see now why you had trouble reading this board last year. Okay, in that case, let's go back to the order that I had before the motion, and Councilmember Holman, then Berman, then Burt, and Scharf.
Okay, so I will repeat my motion, and hopefully with a second, I can speak to a little bit more why. I move that the Embarcadero Road Satellite Parking Lot Project be eliminated from the consideration to solve downtown parking solutions.
Is that its entirety tonight?
Yes.
I don't see, I don't hear a second.
It's a vote no on this.
Councilmember Schmidt has seconded your motion, so would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I'll do minimal repeat here, but the comp plan and Baylands Master Plan were not referenced in consideration for when this was being brought forward. Actually, I have an amendment to the motion. I'm trying to keep this focused, let me look at my notes here. I already talked about spillover into parking lots, transferring impacts from one neighborhood to another. I've never supported this location, so again, it's consistent with that. I think the cost per space is high, it doesn't solve much of a problem, it's very few spaces. How do we know that anybody's even going to use these? There've been comments tonight about the shuttle system and how effective it is or isn't, in terms of its consistency in transporting people to downtown. As far as I know, and Jaime, you're welcome to answer this, of course, but I don't know if any survey or any outreach has been done to downtown workers to see if they would even use this location.
Through the mayor, I'll try and respond to all those questions. We have not done a survey, but, and I think, one of the objectives of this project is to see if satellite parking is a low-cost, short-term solution that might attract people to park in this area, as opposed to in the neighborhoods. I think, I've heard you and others refer to this as a high-cost solution, but when you compare it to building structures downtown, this is a shorter lead time at a lower cost than building structured parking will be, and so our thought is, it's something that we could advance around the same timeframe as RPP, and hopefully, attract people to park in these spaces. Obviously, the issues that you've mentioned about potentially transferring impacts to another neighborhood is something that we would look at in the analysis, should the contract be approved this evening, and also, we would look at the Baylands policies that you mentioned, and we did insert that in your at-places memo this evening, that those policies are among the things that we would have to look at in our analysis.
Okay, just a couple of other things here are, well, I have a number of comments about other programs I think we could utilize better, including one that Councilmember Klein and I continue to support. The cost is not just in dollars and cents, though. There are two ways to look at what the cost of this is. You can look at the cost specifically to do this, but there's another cost, which is the environmental cost and the aesthetic cost, which both speak to comprehensive plan and Baylands Master Plan issues, but if we're talking about putting parking out there, what happens typically, can't say absolutely that's what would happen here, but typically, what happens is, once an area is degraded, it becomes considered as degraded, and so it just, you know, things continue to escalate in the same direction as they have gone before. So temporary, what does temporary, in the time of two or three years past, people are going to be accustomed to parking there, and it just, it's a real concern that it's just going to always be that way. It's, we've degraded the area. As far as planting trees to try to, you know, mitigate impacts of, it's the Baylands, you know, it's like, what kind of trees are appropriate to plant at the entrance of the Baylands? So I just am not seeing those as solutions, and so that's why the motion to eliminate this particular quote-unquote "solution" as part of the menu of items that we would consider. I would amend my own motion, though, to say that next week, when the other item comes having to do with parking, that there be, and this is akin to Councilmember Klein's comment, that there be an opportunity to discuss the list of potential solutions at tomorrow, excuse me, at next week's meeting, it feels like tomorrow.
Do you want to include that in your motion tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so she wants to include a list of all of the items which we covered, I guess, in February, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, for possible comment and questions.
I'll get to you, Councilmember Schmidt, just a minute. Is there any, do you have any comment about that?
Yeah, I'm not sure I heard everything Councilmember Holman was saying about a holistic discussion of parking items next week.
Let me be clear, I'm not expecting for staff to have every iota of information about all of those items, I'm just saying that we should be able to discuss them or ask questions, in order that we can kind of like not, the word is silo, it's often gets used, that we are not looking at this in a silo fashion.
All right, so we'll ultimately need a little help from the mayor and the council. In order to get the report out by Wednesday, that means the reports are already written and done today, and they're just going through a final review, so we wouldn't be in a position of changing the report at this point in time. So I think the question is more, well, need more clarity on that, just so you know.
Let me clarify, so all I'm doing is, I'm asking here for the ability for the council to discuss or ask questions or consider what the other options are, not for more information about them. So it's just really a matter of adding those potentialities to the staff report, so that we aren't constrained from talking about them. That's all I'm looking for.
Mr. City Manager, isn't that also part of the continuation of the comprehensive plan, that staff would come back with their work plan as to what they're working on, particularly with some of the strategies that are related to this type of parking saturation? Or is this expanded from that, Councilmember Holman? Could you please help us here?
Well, a couple, well, just to get the, you know, we have so many different things going on, you know, and they're kind of looping back and forward in time. The council motion last week included a piece to give us, provide the council with an update or a summary of all of the initiatives and everything that the council had directed. So in that sense, there is a relationship between what Councilmember Holman is asking for, and the potential to be able to talk about those things here. On the one hand, I guess, at a minimum, the city attorney would have to help, we would have to expand the title to be able to allow that to speak. I would say that can always get confusing for the public, I mean, a little bit, just that there's a title that is expansive, and then there's a staff report that people who are not as intimately familiar with this would be reading it and wouldn't necessarily see all of those pieces, but you all would have to make that decision. And the only other thing I would raise about that is, it does sound a little bit similar to ultimately this integration conversation you were talking about having in September, so I really don't think, we have too many things to do, to be caught talking about the same thing, week after week. So I'll leave that for you to decide whether or not we've understood and assessed that correctly or not.
So respectfully, I would say, I'm not sure I'm understanding the difference between continuing the item to next week, which also means the description would have to be changed in the noticing and in the staff report, and what I'm asking for, which also would require a different... require a difference in the title of the action item. So both of them would be, but this issue didn't come up with the prior motion. So I'm seeing them as one and the same.
We can take up your motion as it is, and we'll see if we have support for it, and then maybe we can go through some of the intricacies as to how we can renotice and possibly get the packet out, that packet item out late. Councilmember Schmidt, would you like to speak to your second?
Just a couple comments. Why non-satellite parking? One, I think it has very small gains. It's 1% of the total parking needs of the downtown. Two, it has impact on new players and brings new neighborhoods, residents who use the Baylands into the game, you know, under quote, "share the pain." Number three, has issues on parking, both in the neighborhoods between there and the downtown, and also overflow parking throughout the Baylands. How do you maintain just the 132 parking spaces? Traffic, if you look carefully at the description of the traffic study they're going to do, that intersection on the east side of Embarcadero and 101 is one of the worst in the cities, and the traffic study focuses on LOS, which I think yet last week, we decided is not the best way to measure traffic. Or number two, it looks at the Traffic Capacity Manual 2000 Edition. Now, that is outdated. So the credibility of the traffic study is not very big. Finally, the cost of this goes into the general fund. So the benefits go to the downtown businesses, the costs go to the residents, who cover about 70% of the general fund funds. So there are a lot of reasons not to push satellite parking.
Okay, I'm going to hold the three people that have not yet had their questions out, and four, including me. So Councilmember Berman, you'd like to speak to this motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. So let me start off by saying, I'm kind of surprised, I've got to be honest, by the lack of community support for this project, by a lot of very active and local community leaders who have pushed for this project up until this point. And I was trying to remember, you know, I know that we'd heard from a lot of leaders in the past, and went back and found an email with a presentation that was by, a combined presentation from leaders living adjacent to the University Avenue Commercial Court, presented by Nielsen Buchanan and Eric Philseth, and signed in addition by Richard Brand and Norman Beamer, where they say, "Satellite parking and shuttle, this project should be fast-tracked in order to facilitate the January 1, 2015 deadline established by the city council, and please clarify the need for environmental review." You know, not many people have come to speak in favor of it today, but it's important for all of the community to realize that this was an issue that's been pushed a lot by community members who had supported it, and maybe their support for it has changed. But, you know, it deserves discussion tonight. Let me first ask a couple of questions of staff that I might have--
We're going to speak to the motion right now, so.
So I'm explaining why, well, should I explain why I'm going to oppose the motion?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Can I ask questions of staff while doing that? Great. So are we adding, and I might have missed this in the material, but are we adding additional shuttle stops along the route with this plan, or are we expanding upon the shuttle stops that already exist?
Thank you, Councilmember Berman. We will actually be expanding. We're proposing a minimum of two new shuttle stops to support shuttle activities for the parking lot.
And would those be on the east side of 101, or would those be in the neighborhoods on the west side of 101?
Those will all be on the east side of 101.
Okay, so would there ever be any additional shuttle stops on the west side of 101 in the residential neighborhoods?
As part of the Embarcadero Parking Lot Project, you know, we wouldn't be looking at that, but we have a separate study that will come into the council in September that analyzes the existing shuttle operations. We may be recommending expansion, but that would be done as part of that process.
Got it. And do we have an idea for the hours that we'd be looking at for when the shuttles will be running from the Embarcadero lot to downtown or other commercial cores in Palo Alto?
That is a thing we would actually present to you in September, again, in response to the question from Councilmember Price earlier. That's what we're going to be looking at in September when we have a discussion with you.
Okay. Jim, I know, you know, you might not have an answer to this question, but do we have any sense for, and I maybe haven't been keeping up with where we are with all the different discussions with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, but do we know when the golf course spaces might come open? Do we have any approximation? When will we stop being able to play golf at the golf course, and those parking spots will be available for something else?
Well, I'm probably in a better position to let the council know that in the next couple of weeks. That would be okay?
Yep, thanks. So this is an imperfect possible solution to a very difficult problem, and I think it's a lot more comprehensive of a problem than maybe we're all acknowledging. Let me first say that I would view this as a short-term solution if it were to be approved, and if I were to vote to approve it, and I haven't decided that. But as Councilmember Klein alluded to earlier, we have a lot of things from TDM to possibly additional parking supply downtown to try to reduce the need for a lot of parking. And one of the reasons why, you know, I don't necessarily love adding additional parking east of 101 is, we're just adding parking supply. We're not trying to incentivize or encourage, you know, less driving or taking public transportation. But at the same, and, you know, obviously, that's something that long-term we need to be striving towards as a community to better manage the, you know, amount of traffic that we have in Palo Alto and the demand for parking. But at the same time, we have to deal with the reality of the situation today. And the reality of the situation today is that we have a lot of parking intrusion into our downtown neighborhoods and into neighborhoods in other parts of town. Because of that parking intrusion, we're implementing, at the strong urging of the community, an RPP program. And we're going to implement that program, starting hopefully in January, and begin rolling it out to other parts of town. And as we heard today, some folks in the community want us to limit the number of residential parking spots to, at a minimum, 25% of the current supply. And when that happens, there's going to be a dramatic decrease in supply for the people who come to Palo Alto to work in our commercial cores, and that's going to impact both tech workers, but that's also going to impact service workers, right? We've heard tonight, and we'll hear more next week, I assume, about the current level of saturation in our downtown parking lots. I'm encouraged to hear that we're finally reaching saturation point. I know that's a much more complicated issue than a lot of other people realize, but we're long overdue to have, you know, more full use of our permit parking spaces. But those are used up. And when we eliminate the ability of a lot of people to park in our downtowns, they're still going to need to come here to work, whether it's to work in our tech companies, or whether it's to make us sandwiches, or salads, or do the dishes. And frankly, I think those are the folks, our service workers are the folks that are going to be the most dramatically impacted by the RPP program, because those are the people who have the least ability to buy parking spots that will be available in our RPP districts. So it's easy to say, this is only 132 spots. It's easy to say, this isn't perfect, because it isn't perfect. But what other solutions are people offering? You know, if we're going to implement RPP come January 1st, what's going to happen in the community? Are people just going to have an inability to commute to Palo Alto from as far away as Gilroy and Tracy and further every day to work here? Or are we going to try to identify some sort of solutions, and I would argue here, short-term solutions, to bridge the gap between the implementation of RPP on January 1st and additional supply measures or reducing the demand for parking spots, which will be happening over the next couple of years? So I think, you know, this is a long way of saying that I'm not convinced yet that this isn't an idea worth studying. I think this is an idea worth studying. I'd be curious to hear from staff as to whether or not, if we do narrow this to just a short-term scope, would that lower the cost of the study? You know, might that lower the time, or either cost of the study? And I'm being asked to ask that question later. So you guys are on notice. I'm going to ask that question later. But I'm not ready to eliminate this as an option. I don't think we've identified enough solutions, and so I don't know necessarily how we can eliminate options at this point. So I won't be supporting the motion.
Councilmember Klein?
I share the eloquence of, I don't share the eloquence. I share the views of Councilmember Berman. I think he's eloquently stated reasons why we should not pass this motion, and I don't see any reason for us to eliminate this alternative, though I think, and I'm sort of anticipating his question, I will not favor going forward with the recommendation of staff tonight, because I think we need to explore lower-cost alternatives, and I've alluded to them before. I would use this opportunity, just briefly, to say, I think there is possibilities for use of the area east of Bayshore. I've worked for, my office was at Embarcadero and East Bayshore Frontage Road for about 20 years. I must have walked from my office to the restaurant at the golf course, I don't know, hundreds of times. So I think I have some familiarity with this street. And the idea that it's the, the entry to the Baylands, I think, is really not the case. There's lots of other businesses and other activities along that street. This type of argument was raised, as I recall it, when the council, none of us were on that council, when the council approved the construction of what's now the Eye Institute Building on Embarcadero, and wonder, wonders, that big building has not impacted the quality of the Baylands. And there were certain rumblings along those same lines when Ming's Restaurant came forward with their proposal, which the council ultimately approved, but nothing's happened there quite yet. So I think we need to separate these things out. I don't think there's any reason at all to take the site permanently off the possibilities, but I think that the, that the proposal before us tonight needs further work.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to say a few words, because back in February, when we were looking at this list, I was a no on this. I felt that that was something that we could do later. And I think it was meeting with some of the neighbors around Edgewood Plaza. Jeff Lewinsky has put together some concern regarding the new building that's going in, or the refurbished building that might have more workers than we've had in the past there that's attached to the Edgewood Plaza Shopping Center. And that's when I started to realize that looking at the satellite spot might actually be needed, not just to downtown, but possibly just getting over the 101 and going into the shopping center for any workers that might have to park there and go over to the Edgewood Plaza. And I certainly hope that that grocery store does pick up with its business. So this is why I voted to go ahead and do the RFP at that time, and now we've sent out the RFP, and I'm willing to go ahead and see how the study comes out. I am impressed by the bike paths that are incorporated in this. This is making me much more interested. Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you. I also wish there were easy solutions to this, and I think that Councilmember Berman really summed up a lot of what I wanted to say, and I really appreciate your eloquence on that. I thought you did a great job laying that out. I think there's certain things we need to think about here. People have said that 132 spaces is not a lot. 132 spaces is a lot. It's probably 7%. It's somewhere between 6% and 9% of our parking deficit. And the Councilmember Schmidt's notion of 12,000 missing parking spaces, I think it's more, and I think Mr. Buchanan has indicated, you know, it's somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Jaime, but that's what seems the parking intrusion, somewhere in that 1,500 to 2,000. Is that correct? So what we need to do is, when we put in RPP, we need to find 1,500 to 2,000 spaces, roughly, of people who are where they're going to park. And part of that, obviously, is if, just using Mr. Buchanan's number of 25%, would stay in the neighborhoods. So you'd take that out, put 132 here. The other leg of that, obviously, would be TDM. You know, we need to do that. And the other part is efficiency, which is what we're doing with the parking garages. When you start to add that up, you start to tackle the project. If you say it's a 12,000-spot problem, you might as well just throw up your hands and give up. And it's not. You need to make incremental steps to solve this, and that's why I wanted to take this tonight. And by approving this tonight, it wouldn't be that we would be going ahead and doing this. What we're doing is studying it. We're looking and saying, you know, I also don't want to make this be a problem for Crescent Park or any of the stops along. I don't want people parking there and stopping and it. But what this allows us to do is to study this and come up with a solution, and ask ourselves, does this work? This is not a final vote on this. This is not a decision to do this. This is a decision to say, we need to move this forward. What I've heard from the neighborhoods is, we need RPP, and we need it now. And people have been complaining that we're moving too slowly. Well, if we don't move forward on this, we are moving too slowly. We're not doing something. We need to move forward on this. So what we need to do is to move forward and make sure that we come up with a plan that does this, and we need to do all the things that we're doing. So I'll make a substitute motion, that we go with the staff recommendation. I did have one question, though, because I wanted to do the 4.6, but it's not 4.6, it's 4.7. So I think we should do with the alternative on 4.7, which was to remove Task 4.7 and other references to the Baylands Athletic Center from the attached scope of work. And I would also like to include direction to staff to come back at the appropriate meeting to, how did I write this out? To analyze the feasibility of using the golf course when it's closed for temporary parking.
I'll second that. Would you like to speak to your motion any further?
Just briefly. I do think it's important that we make a commitment to get RPP done. And if we're going to do that, we need to make a commitment that we need to govern. And part of governing is saying, hey, 1,500 to 2,000 cars are not going to park where they parked before. That means we can't just throw up our hands and say, well, it's not our problem, because it's difficult decisions. We need to say, this is the way we're going to handle it, and this is the solutions we're going to offer. And if people have other solutions, they should bring them forward. But we need to get this done, and we need to govern.
Councilmember Price, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I agree largely with all the comments made by Councilmember Scharf and Councilmember Berman. I think it's very important that we move forward. I feel I'm having a bit of a déjà vu regarding last week's meeting, which was, we had a long discussion at that point. We had asked the staff to bring forward options and alternatives, and then we proceeded to say, why did you bring this to us? It's incomplete. It's not enough, and we want more detail. And my colleagues certainly have a right to ask that. That is a very logical thing in terms of staff will do. For us to have informed discussion, we need information. We talk about needing data. This is the way that we'll get data. My concern is, with very complicated parking issues, people are crying out for solutions, and we've asked the staff to come up with options. This is one of them. My concern is, if we keep trying to bundle things together, we'll have the same problem we've had four times or five times that we've discussed a parking problem, which is, we're trying to cover too many items at the same time. So I believe this is an appropriate way to go, to move forward on this with the modification of the scope of services. My only concern is the last statement about the parking and the golf course. I will be supporting this as stated, but I'm very concerned regarding what the staff said earlier about the environmental work that's already been completed. And there are, you know, that is a discreet document, and I would anticipate that when the staff comes back, we'll have more discussion about that. But I will be supporting this motion. It's important for us to move forward. Again, if we don't have perfect solutions, we have solutions that are worth examining, and this is one of them. And I really want to say, I very much appreciate the staff's work and their analysis, and I look forward to more detail coming forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Burt?
Well, I'll be opposing this motion for reasons similar to what Councilmember Klein described as his reasoning for the prior motion, which is that we really are essentially taking this up slightly out of order. We have next week, a presentation on technology solutions-- We have next week, a presentation on technology solutions, then a few weeks after that, a much more holistic presentation on our various parking measures, which are both supply and demand. We haven't heard anything about how effective the go-passes are, any of the measures that we're working on to reduce demand, as well as the supply increases. And it's through those two things that we're gonna figure out what's the remaining deficit, and how essential or not essential this is, aside from the merits of this project. And the notion that we're just voting to go ahead with study tonight, it's $180,000 for the design and environmental analysis of this thing. And once we've done that, makes it much more difficult to backtrack and not go forward with that additional expenditure for implementation. Not impossible, but more difficult. And so I, I wanna add that not only do I think that our, our decision on this should be contingent on this additional information, but I think we've got a lot of things that are missing from our ability to make an informed decision tonight. So first, Hillary, you had said that this study would, in response to a councilmember's question, look at the potential uptake by downtown businesses. But I read the RFP, I, I don't see anything to that effect in the proposal or the staff report that would indicate whether downtown businesses are going to be surveyed as part of this or separately to determine how many of those workers would actually choose to use this program.
Through the mayor, if I can respond to that, I apologize if I misspoke. What I was trying to say is that satellite parking as a concept is something that has been identified as a potential short-term solution that we would like to try through this project, and see if we can get the, the participation of employees who will face very few other options in downtown when RFP is implemented, to see if this is an effective way of addressing their concerns. I'm just not sure that surveying those employees in advance of having this program roll out would be an effective way to gauge that. It's a little bit like you have to try it and sell it and see if you can get people to use it when there are few alternatives available.
Well, I, I'm not convinced that a survey would provide us with definitive information of the participation level once an RFP went in, because you could ask them one question now, and it might be a different answer once they really don't have a place to park. However, we're looking at the need to expand our shuttle program because, to serve this. We're needing to look at whatever is the, essentially, the construction costs of this. So we could be looking at a half million dollars for a short-term solution without having done any effort at all to see whether there's any demand for this solution. So that, that's a statement. I'll go to my next question on, Jaime, when we, it was asked about the shuttle program, you talked about additional stops east of 101. But that's a different issue from additional shuttles that will be needed. And I don't understand how you could not have a necessity for additional, additional shuttles. You got a minimum of 132 spaces, if they were fairly fully utilized, plus some of those may be more than one occupant per vehicle. So you've got some number between 120 and 175, perhaps, additional riders to the shuttle. So how are those people gonna get on our current shuttle unless you're gonna have additional shuttles?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. I think you're right. We do need to look at the amount of shuttles that we provide to service this area. And that's not something that's happening as part of the proposal that was proposed tonight in the scope of work. It was part of the scope of work for this study that is wrapping up that we're getting on Wednesday. So we specifically asked Fair and Peers, as part of that analysis, to look at a concept of an Embarcadero Road satellite parking lot, and what level of service we would need to provide to make that a functional lot. And so we should be having that information on Wednesday, and we'll be planning on sharing it with the PTC and the city council in September.
So if you do have additional shuttles, would those stop at other shuttle stops on the way to downtown?
As of right now, we asked them to evaluate the existing Embarcadero route. And I do wanna make a note, because I think it's very important for you to understand, the city of Palo Alto doesn't operate and maintain the Embarcadero route. That's actually a route that's operated and maintained by Caltrain. Caltrain pays 75 percent of that route, we pay 25 percent, and we get only peak-hour service today at about a 20 to 15-minute headway. So it's, it's a rather efficient shuttle today. It's just got a very short headway compared to the cross town, which is about an hour. But we, we just anticipated that in order for surface parking lots along Embarcadero to be attractive, you know, people were not, we're not gonna wait 20 minutes. We figured we might need something that's as short as a 10-minute headway. And those are the kinds of questions that we asked Fair and Peers to, to consider looking at. And we do think that there will need to be shuttle stops, again, at least two, on the area of the proposed parking lot, because there's no stops there today. There's no, there's no parking lot there.
Jaime, that's great, but I asked one question, you're answering a whole bunch of other stuff. Mine was, if you add more shuttles, are you going to have more additional stops west of 101?
Councilmember Burt, as of right now, we're not proposing any new stops. There'll be more frequents of buses that could stop.
No, no, but I'm not sure if you're following the question. We right now have a shuttle, the Embarcadero Shuttle, and it has a whole series of stops. You're gonna add a couple stops east of 101. Got it? It currently has the shuttle, each time you have a bus go from Embarcadero to downtown, it has a series of stops getting to downtown. If you add shuttles, more shuttles, are you planning on those additional shuttles stopping at those same stops that we currently have?
I think by enhancing the service, we're definitely giving the community that option to stop at those stops that exist today. There, there could be a desire for people to stop at the shopping center, at the, at the Fresh Market.
Okay, wait, let's clean up, we gotta try and move on, because I'm, I'm trying to focus on a specific question for a certain reason, and I'm getting a whole encyclopedia Britannica here on shuttle.
Councilmember Burt, I mean, I think, I think part of it, I, I don't know that we know the answer to that question yet, based on, one, you're still finalizing this work on the shuttle RFP, and this study has to, if we do it, has to design in those concepts. So we would inherently be, have to be sensitive to the potential impact of pop-up satellite parking lots if we didn't take that into fact, into, into effect.
So here's the potential. Right now, if the current shuttle stops at a series of places, take it by the downtown library, main, excuse me, by the main library, art center, tennis lots, which have between them probably 100-plus off-street parking spaces that at 8:00 in the morning are under, almost completely unutilized. Right now, if you have a shuttle that's there, nobody's very attracted to park in those spaces and go to downtown, because the frequency of service is not adequate. They wanna come back to their car in the evening, and there's very little shuttle service. If you increase the headway, improve the headway on that, then suddenly, all those, that stop and a bunch of others in neighborhoods are going to be the de facto satellite spots. Much more attractive for me than parking down at the Bayland. I can go park there. So that's a big potential unintended consequence that, that hasn't been vetted, that we'll know more about when you come back with the, the shuttle analysis. But I hope that when it does come back in September, this kind of question will have been looked at. But I think that to rush into spending $180,000 now, committing ourselves to, who knows, a half million or whatever, for two years' worth of service with this level of unanswered question is problematic. Second, or next, the intersection at East Bayshore and Embarcadero, is that an LOS of F currently?
I don't have the LOS numbers of the existing conditions today.
Well, that's my recollection. So you're coming here with a proposal to have a whole bunch more traffic go out in that, through that intersection, and don't know what LOS it is. I don't think that it's responsible also for us as a council to go forward on this decision without that kind of information.
Can I just do a follow-up? Is that part of the study of the environment that's gonna happen, when this is just the design and then also the environmental impact? Because that was one of my questions as well.
It is, Mayor Shepherd. Part of the analysis includes confirming the existing level of service, as well as any changes in level of service as a result of the potential increase in traffic for the use of the surface parking lot. I, I can say that there are no proposed lane reductions or capacity reductions at East Bayshore or at Gang Road. Any of the proposed roadway changes would be east of Faber Place, so the capacity of the existing intersections would not be changed.
The capacity, no, I wasn't talking capacity. The capacity, the intersection will be changed, and the demand for that intersection will be changed. That's the point I was making.
I understand, Councilmember. I'm just making the point that the capacity isn't changing.
It's not what I was addressing. Second, we don't need to hire a consultant to know what LOS that intersection is. So I think that's, that's really a misleading statement, and I, and, and that's not what we need to do in an environmental analysis. It may look at the additive impact on that intersection, which we don't know. But to know the baseline, to know it's an F right now, that doesn't require, that should be part of this report right now when we go and make a decision. If we have an F intersection right now, we as council members should have a real pause on whether we're gonna have a significant addition to that and spend a bunch of money going down a rat hole. Next, we, we had the parking lot at the Baylands Athletic Center removed from this consideration tonight, I think principally because it appears to be part of dedicated parkland. Isn't that also the case on the golf course parking lot?
Councilmember Burt, to clarify, the Baylands Athletic Center was removed because the staff is not currently proposing it. So there is no reason to go forward with the full analysis of the procedures that would be required to use it. It is the case for the golf course, that that is dedicated parkland, and the council has asked in the motion for an analysis of feasibility of using that on a temporary basis, and that will be a part of the question that we answer when we come back on that item.
Okay. Well, I think, I thought we pulled the, or it's my understanding that part of why we pulled the Baylands parking lot from consideration was because it was a parkland. So that's, to me, that sounds a little circular, but so be it. So I think there's a, there's a whole variety of reasons why this isn't ripe for a decision. And yes, we have a pending RFP program, and we do have, in fact, this gap that we have to fill through addressing supply and demand. And we know very little right now about how well the, the supply, the other supply alternatives are gonna stack up, and how well the demand alternatives are stacking up. But we'll know a lot more at this, after this September meeting, and I think be able to make a much more informed decision. And I don't see that a matter of weeks, that this has the urgency to skip past all these different things that we don't know that would be necessary for us to make good, quality, informed decisions, whether the staff to make a good, quality, informed recommendation to spend this money, or the council to make the decision to go forward with it.
Vice Mayor Ness.
Just a reminder, we're speaking of Scharf's motion, which puts 180,000 out for the design and environmental review of this particular parking lot project. Somewhat trite and probably not as eloquent as Mark was, but I, I don't know how else you start getting to a solution without taking some of these first steps. I simply don't know how you get to that. When I ran, I ran with Councilmember Burt, Berman, and Schmidt. And we ran in the fall of 2012. And in that fall, I heard from so many of you in this audience, how many of you in here are concerned about the residential, how many of you are concerned about parking and traffic? Just about everyone. And one of the things, I remember a long conversation with Nielsen, where he drafted me, and I know he did all of you, and they did Coffey's and any kinds, any number of outreaches, to say, this is a huge problem. We really need to solve this. I am absolutely in favor of moving forward with this tonight. But I would also say, as we talk about the vans or the shuttles or whatever may run, I think that we have a group of people who are bright, they're going to learn soon. You could park there, and you could actually carpool into town and find one parking spot, rather than four or five parking spots. I think that will happen fairly soon. I, I think we're ready to go forward with this. We cannot literally handle it all in one night. It's already taken us, I think, an hour and 15 minutes on this item, maybe an hour and a half. We, we have to, we have to at least take that first tiny step. So I am voting yes on this.
Okay, I'm gonna make a couple of comments. I will be in support of the motion, but I also want this community to know, and staff to know, that I do believe that we need to figure out how to park in our downtown districts. I do think that this is a puzzle. It's complicated. I know that I am on city council right now, but I'm responsible for all the decisions that former city councils have made in order to create some of the problems that are going on right now. And so it is my interest to see, even if we can crack open some of those private garages. And I do think that that conversation can happen once we define the transit management assessment districts where people might be putting parking spots on the table instead of cash. So this is one of the reasons why, but, and yet at the same time, right now, like I said before, I really did not wanna look at this. We saw satellite parking in my life here on council with the Stanford Development Agreement. They do do, you know, satellite parking over on the other side of Dunbarton Bridge. And also, I know that the shuttles might consider going out to Fremont-Bart and maybe Ace Train in Fremont, those kinds of things, to cut off those, some of those commutes, so you don't have to go all the way down to San Jose, pick up Caltrain, and come back. So we are trying to put, from what I can tell, we've been trying to put this rigor in to come out with the innovation, the innovative type of solutions, and some of this is just a hard, I think, carpooling is, is how people will, might be re-innovating and regenerizing how this might get used, but we won't know that. I do know that this design also includes bike lanes along Embarcadero Road with a buffer zone. That's something that when I'm out there walking, I really would like to have. There are some, it's just rough out there when you're doing the loop around the Baylands and coming back in through the driving range. So I think that this would also tidy up some parts of this, even though I understand that there would be more cars, which, and cars out there means there's fewer cars coming into the core of Palo Alto. The one question that I have, though, is that when this report comes back, I'm assuming that we'll have a lot more information, and at that time, we'll be able to jump into doing all of it or part of it, because we will be able to have some of the rigor of what will be changing, and how will that change look, and can we accommodate the change. So is that gonna be part of it when it comes back, when we get the design?
That's correct, Mayor Shepherd.
Okay. Thank you. In that case, those concludes my comments, and let's go ahead and vote. I'm sorry, City Manager, did you wanna?
I'm like, we're seconding the comments.
There's no lights, so we're done? Okay.
Madam Mayor, you announced what we're voting for here.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have it up on the board. This is gonna be for the staff recommendation, to go ahead with the consultants agreement and the BKF engineers in the amount of $180,000 for the design and environmental review of the Embarcadero Road Satellite Parking Lot Project, but also removing Task Number 4.7 and other references to Baylands Athletic Center from the scope of work. And direct staff to return to the appropriate meeting to analyze feasibility of using the golf course parking lot while it is closed. With that, let's vote. And that motion carries with Councilmember Holman, Burt, I'm sorry, I can't read, Price and, Berman and, I'm sorry, I'm goofing up here. Holman, Burt, Klein, and Schmidt voting no. And I think they might have changed the angle to that, because I can't really read the names up there as well as I could last.
We knew where we said.
Yeah. So those are, so this motion does carry. With that, let's move on to item number 10. Actually, could we just take a five-minute break? We, let's reconvene at 10 minutes after 9:00. If you could do that, kinda keep your eye on the, on the, on the clock. If you could do that, kind of keep your eye on the clock. Councilmember Scharf. It's like. Okay, thank you for settling down. We're going to take up item number 10, which is the 2180 El Camino Real Proposed Grocery Store Tenant. This item relates to the approval of a planned community ordinance in 2009, which included a small grocery, neighborhood-serving grocery store as a public benefit for a project at 2180 El Camino Real. The planned community ordinance allows the city to review and approve the proposed grocery store tenant for the College Terrace Center by determining whether it will be comparable quality and service as the former JGNF market as it existed in December 2009. On the, on the, on the city attorney's recommendation, we are going to allow the applicant to have 10 minutes to do a presentation. Then I will open the public comment period and then I will return to the applicant for three minutes of rebuttal, then to the council for questions, comments, and actions. Before we begin, our rules call for councilmembers to disclose outside contacts that have provided information that is outside the record. Do any colleagues have disclosures to make this evening? Councilmember Klein.
Yes, I met with the applicant and his attorney and I have no additional information than what we have in the record.
All right. Thank you. And do we have a staff report or are we going straight to the applicant?
Thank you, Mayor Shepard. Hillary Gittleman, the planning director. I just had, wanted to reiterate a little bit of what you stated in your introduction and that is to say that the PC zoning ordinance approved this project contingent on this public benefit and the operative text about the grocery tenant is actually in your staff report on page one. It calls for city approval. The tenant is subject to city approval and states specifically that the grocery tenant, if it is a party other than John Garcia, shall be subject to prior approval of the city of Palo Alto. It goes on to say that the city's approval shall not be withheld unless the city reasonably finds that the proposed grocery tenant is not likely to be comparable in quality of products and services as JGNF as it existed and operated on December 7, 2009. As indicated in the staff report, we have received the applicant's proposed lease and additional information about the proposed grocery tenant. We've also received a third-party review of the applicant's material, which is in the packet tonight, and I believe the author of that study was here this evening. I don't know if they've been able to, if he's been able to stay. Although this isn't a formal hearing, we are recommending, as the mayor indicated, that we hear from the applicant first and then the public comments. Staff would like to reserve the opportunity to respond to the public comments if necessary at the end. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And who will be speaking on behalf of the applicant? This is where I don't have a card. So do we have a record? Okay.
Yep. You should have a card up there for me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Your name, please?
Christina Lawson. Let me pass these out.
Okay. Got it.
I just wanted to make sure you all have a copy of the renderings to remind yourself what we're talking about since we're back here again after several years. Good evening, Mayor Shepard and members of the city council. My name is Christina Lawson. I am the land use counsel to the College Terrace Center project and I very much appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the status of the project and about this item that is before you this evening with respect to the grocery tenant for the project. The key project team members are also here with me and available for any questions that you might have at the conclusion of my presentation. past year, to work on this item from a historical perspective and also in connection with the specific request we have before you this evening. As an aside, I had the opportunity to work with your new planning and community environment director, Gittleman, while she was Napa County's planning director, and I can assure you, they miss her up there in Napa. It's been a long time since the College Terrace Center project has been before the city council. In fact, it was approved by the city council over four and a half years ago after quite a number of public hearings and significant scrutiny by both the public and the city's decision-makers at the time. As your staff report indicates, at the time the project was originally approved, it was understood that the grocery store that operated on site then, which was J.J.N.F., would continue in operation in the new project. Unfortunately, John Garcia, who was the proprietor of J.J.N.F., has formally indicated that he will not return and operate a grocery store as part of the project. The project learned of Mr. Garcia's decision about a year ago, and the project principals have been working ever since to identifying a new grocery end user for the project. We understand that the council and the community are disappointed that Mr. Garcia and J.J.N.F. will not return as part of the new project. Like you and the other interested community members, we know that Mr. Garcia was an important part of the neighborhood and that he ran his business with a friendly, personal style that is uncommon in today's marketplace. On behalf of the project, let me express that there is no one more disappointed that J.J.N.F. will not return to the site. The project was looking forward to creating a new space for the market that we believed would only enhance its viability and long-term success. Moreover, I can say with certainty that we would have preferred to avoid this process entirely and have focused instead on providing a first-class project for this town. But alas, Mr. Garcia's decision last summer reminded us that a project like College Terrace Center has many variables, of course, and particular tenants cannot be guaranteed by us, by the city, or any other party. I can assure you that it is the desire of the project to provide a market that provides an unforgettable customer experience, and we know that J&amp;A Family Market will do just that. While the city can't guarantee any particular tenant or end user, as Director Gittleman explained a short time ago, here the city has put in place a special limitation on the project that requires the city to essentially determine that any grocery tenant that is proposed that is not John Garcia is likely to nevertheless be comparable in terms of quality of products and services as J.J.N.F. as it existed back in 2009. Specifically, according to the operative condition, the city's evaluation and determination of comparability must be reasonable and can't be withheld unless the city can make the express finding that the proposed grocery store is not comparable. This is an affirmative finding that the council must make, and I would submit to you that all the evidence in the record this evening, substantial evidence in the record, supports a comparability finding. There's no evidence in the record that would support any other determination. Tonight, both your own staff and then an independent third-party grocery consultant, which was retained by the city, have concluded that J&amp;A Family Market would likely be comparable in quality of products and services to the former J.J.N.F. market as it existed back in 2009. We agree with this conclusion. Your staff report includes a copy of J&amp;A's business plan, the floor plan, responses to questions that were previously posed to J&amp;A by staff, and local demographic information as well. And we encourage you, if you have any questions about any of those documents, to please ask, again, we have team members here in attendance that can answer any of the questions. Also included in the staff report is a report by Sudi Associates, the city's retained expert on this matter, and I'd like to highlight just a few points from that report. First, Sudi Associates was in a very unique position to review the proposal for J&amp;A Family Market that is before you this evening. Sudi remodeled J.J.N.F. Market way back in 1996 and was intimately familiar with the layout of that store and many of the defined departments that once existed within that market. This enabled the city's consultant, your consultant, to compare both the plans and the product offerings of J.J.N.F. and J&amp;A in a way that's very unique. Second, Sudi Associates concluded that the management team and advisors for the J&amp;A Family Market have qualified credentials to participate in managing and advising the owners of J&amp;A Family Market. Unfortunately, in the press this week, there's been really an intensely ugly focus on those involved in the J&amp;A Family Market, really to the detriment of this process this evening, which is required by your own condition to be focused on the products and services offered by the new grocery market. Reading the Sudi report was really helpful to me in peeling the layers of that onion back, revealing that at the core of the J&amp;A proposal is a highly qualified team with the capability of delivering a great market for the community. This team has benefited from suggestions that were made by your experts, Sudi and Associates, which J&amp;A Family Market plans to implement. But most important is Sudi's conclusion, which is, I quote, "After reviewing the information provided to the consultant by J&amp;A Family Market, it is the opinion of the consultant that the proposed store layout, marketing strategy, management team, and advisors will create a store that will be a benefit to the community of Palo Alto. J&amp;A Family Market will be comparable, if not superior, in quality of products and services to J.J.N.F. Market," end quote. So to conclude my remarks, the owners of the College Terrace Center project are longtime members of the Palo Alto community, and they've owned this project site for more than 80 years. Their proposed development of the property is intended to enhance and revitalize the highly visible project site, creating an amenity and an asset for the surrounding neighborhood and for all of Palo Alto. As your staff report indicates, the city's approval this evening is a prerequisite to the last step in the development process for this site, issuance of a building permit. If you've visited the site recently or driven down El Camino, you'll notice a substantial amount of work on the project has already occurred. The old buildings were demolished, the site has been fully prepared for construction, leasing of the site is well underway. On behalf of the entire project team, I respectfully request that you allow the College Terrace Center project to move forward with the approval of the grocery tenant this evening. Thank you very much, and we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to go out to public comment, and then you can come back with a rebuttal. Okay, we have a number of speakers here. Our first speaker, and you will have three minutes, excuse me, three minutes to speak on this item, is Robert Moss, to be followed by William Ross.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd and council members. Well, here we are, the PC scams are back before us. Let me give you an example. This is the second project in Palo Alto with a public benefit, was a grocery store. In the case of Alma Plaza, unlike this case, McNellis was eager to tell everybody about what a wonderful grocery he had, and he revealed his name and his experience and how successful he was going to be at Alma Plaza. So Mickey's opened, and the staff there was quite helpful and pleasant, and it crashed and burned and went out of business in six months. So if we approve this project with the unknown operators, it reminds me an awful lot of the Wizard of Oz. "This is a miracle maker. He does all sorts of wonderful things. He's marvelous, but don't look behind the curtain." So what I suggest is to simplify the process. Right now, the staff report says, well, if the grocery store goes out of business, and I assure you that if it proceeds as proposed, it will be out of business in six or eight months, that we have something other than the usual enforcement of PC violations, which isn't to do a damn thing. In 30 years, no one has ever been fined in any way for violating their PC requirement and not providing the public benefit. So I suggest that we modify the ordinance, this PC ordinance, in the following manner. If the grocery store fails and closes, the property owner has 60 days to reopen with a new grocery store. If they fail, on the 61st day, they are fined $500 a day. And they are fined $500 a day for the next 60 days, at which time the penalty doubles. And after another 60 days, the penalty doubles again. Meanwhile, the space shall not be used for any other purpose. They cannot rent it out for offices or for any other business except for a grocery store. We might want to go on to a fourth 60-day period where the fine doubles again and actually collect it. But if there are no penalties for violating the PC, I can guarantee you, this PC will be violated, and the grocery store will cease to exist and will never be replaced.
William Ross, to be followed by Bob Smith.
Good evening. My name is Bill Ross. I'm a resident taxpayer. I suggest you either continue this matter to a date certain or deny it outright for the following reasons. First of all, there are several critical documents which were either conditions of approval back in December 2009 and January 2010 that aren't before you, that are critical to this decision, or there are documents that are yet to be provided by the applicant. Among them are the following: the final traffic demand management report, a status report on the encroachment permit, a discretionary action by Caltrans, which is critical for access to this facility and critical to this concept of grab-and-go, the clarification of the subdivision status of the proposal. Is there going to be one? Is it going to involve commercial, residential development? And finally, an unredacted copy of the lease. The lease contains the critical information that you would need as a council to make the findings, regardless of who the tenant is. What are the terms and conditions that would be imposed on the prospective replacement for J.J.N.F.? Those of us who knew John Garcia and the confidentiality agreement, you know, is not an issue, this is before that, know that the problem that he had on the site was the increased rent that he faced, not the patronage by his customers, if you will. I'd also like to raise the lack of public benefit. You've got to make a specific finding for this grocery store under your own ordinance, Section 4 F1. Doesn't it strike you as unique that you're making a finding of public benefit based on what's claimed to be a mostly confidential document for the critical terms? In this time of transparency, that doesn't constitute substantial evidence. I disagree with council. That is contracting away of the police power, and that's absolutely prohibited. I would also respectfully suggest that the conditions have changed since you approved the prior mitigated negative declaration. With respect to traffic and circulation, all you have to do is personally observe what's going on there now. There is no vested right here. There are several projects that you have approved, I think there are 11, 261 South California, 1461 California Avenue, 2209, right across the street on El Camino, the lane reduction in California Avenue, yet there's no assessment of the construction traffic or traffic and generation and parking demands that are associated with that. When is that going to happen? Given the suggested and existing levels of service, LOS, actual figures on El Camino right now, I think that's the best thing you could do in conjunction with your decision tonight, but I think it should be continued.
Thank you, Bob Smith, to be followed by Fred Ballen.
Robert Smith, Rear Road, Palo Alto. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm unimpressed with the J&amp;A Family Market plan and think you should reject it. Looking at this from the experience, or lack thereof, of the people running it, I think we're going to face a very serious challenge there to get a viable grocery store, a sustainable grocery store. And to have, frankly, the developer's son with no experience being in charge of that is not credible. It would also be very helpful to see what efforts the developer has made to find an operator with experience, with adequate experience to this job. You should ask for all of the people that they've talked to and ask them, how viable do you really think this project is? Fundamentally, I come here tonight believing that no grocery store will be sustainable there for any amount of time. And you can look around at other experiences in grocery stores in this community in the last several years and see plenty of reason for having such a doubt. We don't know what kind of a plan they have. My guess is there are two plans. There's Plan A and Plan B. Plan A is, well, the business succeeds. They do a good job and it succeeds, and then they'll perhaps continue to run it or sell it. Plan B is that the business fails. And my guess is they have a spreadsheet that has a performa plan for monthly red ink and for how much money they'll lose before they shut it down. What, a million dollars in a year? I don't know. And when that happens, the developer is going to come back and is going to say, "We tried." And then he'll show you all of the other people he's talked to and all of the evidence, and maybe we'll even have some more grocery stores in town fail by then. But of course, the building will be done, and you'll have no opportunity to do anything about this. Here is what I think you should do. I think you should really take a strong stand on this, because this is your last chance you're going to have to do anything about it. This offer should be rejected on the grounds that the vendor is not qualified and there are too many potential conflicts of interest. Surely those pertain to quality of goods and services provided if the people are not competent. I think you should demand access to their research. You have a right to know what the industry out there thinks about the viability of this project. And I would go so far as to propose some other models entirely. Perhaps they should remove the grocery store and give the community the public benefit of a smaller building. It's going to be a terribly large building over there. So those are my thoughts, but this is your last chance at this.
Thank you. Fred Ballen, to be followed by Robert Phillips.
Good evening. You should not approve J&amp;A Market as grocery tenant. First, because the proposed leaseholder is the son of the developer. Put aside for a moment the lack of experience and consider, how great is the incentive to achieve and maintain comparable quality of goods and services as J.J.N.F. as opposed to a lesser market that just limps along? The business planning consultant write of a new grab-and-go product category, a smaller meat department, and a food prep area replacing one for traditional cooking. No hot spare ribs, roast chickens, or a wide selection of fresh meats as in J.J.N.F. Is this in keeping with real changes in trends, a good business strategy, or just an effort to save money? Without a truly independent and experienced grocery proprietor as leaseholder, we cannot be sure. Reason two: the black box of personnel withheld from staff, council, and the public. Without the full background of the proposed CFO and other key players, you cannot make a proper judgment. You should not, and I'm advised that you legally cannot, delegate your judgment and discretion to someone else unless a statute expressly allows you to do so. This is a land use matter, not a personnel matter, and you would decide it with all necessary details and deliberations in public. Let's recap. The lease runs from father to son, who has no prior experience as a grocer. For key personnel, the son will hire a black box. Black box will be one or more unknown employees who can leave at any time due to dissatisfaction or a higher bidder. If a key player in black box is really good, creative, and successful, will there be a sufficient economic interest to stay long-term? Here's the larger question: what is really happening here? Answer: the developer has created a problem situation to transfer risk from himself to the city. And that is nothing new. Three of you were on this dais five years ago after the planning commission denied the PC, and with the PR professional's "Save J.J.N.F." campaign in full glory, store banners, full-page ads, late project changes, press of a potential move to Mountain View, John Garcia as project spokesperson, a developer pledged to build a new market ASAP, financial data late and retracted, a chamber filled with affinity for J.J.N.F. but more limited on savvy. And so the push by Councilmember Klein to bind the project to J.J.N.F.'s return, and if not possible, then a comparable store approved by the city, i.e. the council, with a lease enforceable against the tenant and prior to any building permit. There is a problem tonight, but it is easy for you to rectify. One, require that the leaseholder be completely independent from the applicant, and two, that you know the names and can fully vet the credentials of the principals to your satisfaction and have their names and company on the lease. and have their names and company on the lease.
Thank you. Robert Phillips, to be followed by Lydia Koo.
Thank you. My name is Robert Phillips and I live in College Terrace. I have little to add to what the previous speakers said, but certainly from the beginning, like many other residents in the neighborhood, I have opposed to this massively oversized office building, which will be less than two blocks away from my home. However, despite vocal opposition from the neighborhood, the council approved the development in 2010 based in part in the claim from the applicant that this would be, quote, "the only way to save J.J.N.F." Of course, this was a pretty specious and cynical claim, I believe, and was highly orchestrated as Mr. Ballen mentioned. And shortly after approval, I think within months, J.J.N.F. disappeared off the face of the earth, never to return. So here we are, more than four years later. At this point, the corresponding public benefit has been downgraded to a market specializing in grab-and-go, to be run by the applicant's son, who has no previous grocery experience in conjunction with partners unknown to the councils, the public, and I believe unknown to staff. Given that the business plans for the operation have not been shared with the council or the public, I am naturally concerned that a market will be open as specified, but if it proves not to be viable, which I believe there is a high chance of, may be quickly downsized to a convenience store, deli, or eliminated entirely. It is not clear to me the city would then have any option other than to, quote, "accept the, quote, facts on the ground" that had been established, and the massive office development without any promised community benefit. It's clear that this massive project should never have been approved in the first place. However, it is to proceed, the least the council can do is insist on a real grocer, an open and transparent process for a change, and strict adherence to both the letter and spirit of the ordinance. Thank you.
Lydia Koo, to be followed by Herb Borak.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Lydia Koo. Thank you for the time to speak on the proposed grocery store agenda item. We've seen this before with Alma Village, another development approved for a PC rezone with parking that is less than sufficient, public benefits with which the community is uncertain how to access, and yes, a grocery store. Hopefully, there were lessons learned from that development so as not to do this again. J.J.N.F. Market under the Garcia's ownership had been serving the community for over six decades. The community deserves to have another J.J.N.F. type of market. The developer agreed to this to get approval for this perceived development, keep them to it. Due diligence, ask the questions, get the answers, and include the community. You created the safeguards to ensure that a viable grocery store is incorporated into the project to benefit the community and continues operating during the project's useful life. Since the grocery store is a public benefit, ensure that this remains a public benefit for decades to come. Additionally, council should include remedies in the ordinance to close loopholes, as stated in the staff report, such as one, not getting enough, I'm sorry, insufficient information with regards to the personnel engaged with grocery experience; two, if the store goes out of business under the younger Smiley; three, the store's quality of its products and services after its opening; four, enforcement methods and remedies to any violations after its opening. This is not ready for approval and needs to be continued. Here's your chance to do right by the residents. Thank you.
Herb Borak, to be followed by Margaret Heath.
Mayor Shepherd and council members, you can't have one process at this agenda item for the applicant and a different process for everybody else. The applicant is being treated as this is a public hearing where the applicant gets a long amount of time to give an opening statement and then time to give a rebuttal. And so if the applicant is given the rights that you would have at a public hearing, then everybody else should get the same rights that you would have at a public hearing on a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. The applicant's attorney made two statements that I understand her to make that I believe are false, that she said, "You have the business plan and the floor plan." When I looked at the copy of the packet, there was a page labeled "floor plan," but there wasn't one. And that is, there was no floor plan shown. And as the previous speakers indicated, you really don't have a complete business plan. Now, those two statements I could respond to because I had all the information that the speaker said. However, at your places this evening, there is a letter from a law firm on behalf of the applicant that's making a legal argument that you can't even determine that there should be a specific retailer, specific person operating the grocery store. Unfortunately, you're missing the even-numbered pages from that letter. It's a five-page letter and there's only pages one, three, and five. At least, that's the copy that's been available to the public. And therefore, we are prevented from commenting and responding to this evidence in the absence of a complete letter. So for this purpose alone, you should continue this meeting. And since you have already said it's being treated for the applicant as a public hearing, it should be treated with the proper public noticing for a public hearing so that everybody has an adequate amount of time to schedule their ability to come to the meeting and to review the materials that are going to be discussed at the meeting. As far as what the council had previously approved, there were some of us who had made the case that the reason a public, a planned community zone was being requested was for the excessive amount of office space, including office space on the ground floor, both of which violate the general zone district that's there, and that's what it's turned out to be. Thank you.
Margaret Heath, to be followed by Mark Weiss.
Good evening, council members. The council specified as a condition of approval that before building could begin, Mr. Smiley must have a proper signed lease with either J.J.N.F. or another grocer with similar experience and standards, providing similar products and services. It is significant Mr. Smiley testified many times that setting aside a subsidized space for a grocery store would be a financial loss for his business plan and a big sacrifice. A secretive lease between Mr. Smiley and his son does not meet the condition of approval for this development to proceed. I believe it's a conflict of interest. So what is the justification for trading 25,000 square feet of development for almost 60,000 square feet if the condition of approval, a viable market, if the lease turns out to be a sham and a market goes quietly out of business in a few years, or becomes merely a glorified sandwich store? If the developer wants or intends to change the condition of approval, which now begins to have the appearance of bait and switch, then this should invalidate the special PC designation. Thank you.
Mark Weiss, to be followed by Say Salam Reddy.
As an observer of this board for a number of years, this particular council especially, I've heard several times over the years, the political metaphor about politics is like making a sausage. I know Greg Scharf, when he was the mayor, would say that a few times. I've heard current Mayor Shepherd say that a few times. And listening to the various debates tonight got me thinking on this issue, that I'm reminded that near this project, there is an entrepreneurial young person. I've never met this person, but I'm reading about her in the Palata Weekly, Jaketa Lannan, L-A-N-N-A-N. Thirty-three-year-old former attorney and recent culinary school graduate took over the site of a bookstore on Cali Ave, first they call it Shea Frank. And what I'm saying is, there are incredibly motivated, incredibly talented, vested, risk-taking people, and I'm just thinking, for a public benefit of this type, I mean, I would rather have someone like a Jaketa Lannan. I'd rather see the gourmet hot dog take the 8,000-square-foot lease than someone who's, it sounds like merely doing it to help the family business or something like that, as the other speakers have said. So, you know, you've heard me speak, I'm very particular sometimes about cultural matters, and, you know, just with all the talent in the community, you know, I think we could find, we could have found perhaps a better public benefit than what's being suggested. But thank you.
Say Salam Reddy, to be followed by Doria Suma.
I think we have a fantastic opportunity to have a nice food court there. Please think outside the box. There are things, there are stores that are in the California arena, such as Bristol Farms. You know, there's one in San Francisco, there's one in LA, El Segundo, Newport Beach. They are already proven, they do a good job. And consider that, that lifts up our community and it adds value to our College Terrace area. There's another one that I have not seen, but everybody talks about Dean and DeLuca. They're a Midwest company, they're in DC, and they're very prestigious. So they all want to come here and do a good job. So why talk about all these things, you know, good, bad, and going bankrupt, this and that? I think these are the proven people that have done this work, including Safeway. Safeway might want to come here and make a nice little store. So please take that into consideration. I tell that to the citizens, as well as the owners, as well as the council. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Doria Suma.
Good evening, Mayor and council and staff. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Doria Suma. I live on Yale Street in College Terrace. I was also on the Residents Association and the 2180 Task Force that looked at the project in detail when it was going through the hearing process. And many, many residents of College Terrace and other parts of Palo Alto were troubled by the massive size of this project and the corresponding impacts on the neighborhood. And unfortunately, the history of this project has been marked by manipulation and a lack of transparency on the part of the applicant's team. And this seems to be continuing. Five years after the project was approved, with no outreach to the neighborhood, the applicant is proposing his own son and business partner, who has no experience as a grocer, as the operator of the grocery, which constitutes the main public benefit of this project. The developer claims that there are three professionals associated with the project who have 100 years of experience together in the grocery business, and yet their identities are hidden from the public, from the city. So how can city staff, council, and the public be assured that the grocery store is a legitimate project with a high chance of success when no hard facts, business plan, and it's based on a single consultant's opinion alone? Not once since the project was approved has the applicant come forward to the community to explore, share options regarding the grocery tenant. I believe this is consistent with a lack of transparency that the applicant has displayed throughout the process. Furthermore, the lease agreement with his son is not an appropriate arms-length arrangement for the key public benefit of this very large project. I think you should not agree to the applicant's request tonight, rather insist that the applicant find a proven and known grocer who is willing to open at that location and is willing to share their identity with the council and the public and is committed to making a successful grocery store. Thank you.
Thank you. And this is when we will have the applicant return for a three-minute rebuttal.
I apologize, these are going to seem a little disjointed because I do want to make sure I try to respond to some of the key points raised. The first point I'd like to respond to is the notion that you don't have a copy of the business plan or the site plan included as part of your packet. You do have, excuse me, attachment C and beyond, quite a bit of information about the business plan. As attachment B, I would just call to your attention, that is the commercial lease for the site. It's not between a father and his son, it's between the owner of the property and J&amp;A Family Markets. Neither party is related, and while they're referred to as entities, neither of these parties is related. College Terrace Center LLC is the owner of the property, who's owned this site for more than 80-some years. I would just remind the council that the scope of the condition is very narrow this evening. This, unfortunately, for those members of the public who were dissatisfied with the council's decision back in 2010, this is not a reopening of the entirety of the project. This is compliance with the condition of approval, just as we would comply with the some hundred or more conditions that were associated with this project. Some of the items raised by Mr. Ross, for example, in his remarks, would never return to the council for your consideration. Again, tonight, we're considering a replacement tenant because Mr. John Garcia has determined on his own volition that he does not wish to be a part of the project. It's not an opportunity to review every employee that's going to be active at this site, just as you would never review every employee of an Albertson's or a Safeway or a Whole Foods store if they were coming to town. I will state, however, that your third-party independent consultant that the city retained has had an opportunity to review those trade-secret-protected lists of employees. And the reason that they're not made public is because these people have jobs here in your local community that they wish to have until such time as the new market can be opened, when the project is built. So again, the scope of the condition before you this evening, it's a very, very narrow determination you must make, and that is whether or not the goods and the services are going to be comparable. The third-party independent consultant and your own staff have concluded that the city's requirements for this use have been satisfied. And this, again, it's a land use matter that's before you. It's not a personnel matter. It's not a matter of whether you like the operator or not. This is a land use matter. This is to determine that we're providing an equivalent land use to the city of Palo Alto. There will be significant consequences to the project if we're not able to move forward. And I would call your attention back to the mission statement that's in the business plan as attachment C. "The market is committed to providing its customers the best food and beverage values and the highest-quality products while minimizing the carbon footprint by providing a full array," if you just let me finish for one moment, "of products to serve the neighborhood and community. J&amp;A Market is committed to supplying merchandise that is locally grown and sustainable wherever possible, and tobacco products will not be available in the store. We will provide information to our customers that allows them to make informed buying decisions and will do so with a dedication to the highest quality of customer satisfaction, delivered with a sense of warmth, friendliness, fun, individual pride, and company spirit." Thank you.
Thank you. And I noticed that you didn't use all of your time before. I think you had another two and a half minutes.
Thank you very much.
With that, why don't we go ahead and bring it back to council and see if we have any questions? Perhaps we should try it that way and then go into action. Why don't we do questions first so that we can hold off on motions in case people have questions for the applicant or staff? And nobody does.
Let's start.
All right. Councilmember, I mean Vice Mayor Ness.
For those of us who weren't here, I actually want to look at Molly and Kara. It's quite clear that this is controversial at this point, without question. My question would be, does what has been proposed by the applicant under what you would say would be the law, meet the letter of the law for those findings that went into place in 2010? Because it sounds to me as though tonight, in 2014, we're basing a decision on something that happened in 2010. Am I correct? So, you're nodding. So let me direct these at Ms. Silver instead. So, would you make some comments on that? Because I am concerned. We do have two grocery stores that also were part of a similar process, and it doesn't appear that either of them is flourishing at that point, and that's, I think, a great concern to us. If we are going to approve a grocery store of this type, which is somewhat off the grid from what we are usually seeing that succeeds in Palo Alto, that's a great concern to us. So what happens when a grocery store does go defunct? And how will we deal with that? Mickey's fortunately was replaced, or unfortunately, depending on what your viewpoint was. But could you expand on that for those of us who weren't here, then?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Ness, Kara Silver, Senior Assistant City Attorney. So I think that there have been three other projects in Palo Alto that contained a grocery store as a community benefit. And the council learned from each of those projects. And the council learned from each of those projects. As you mentioned, there were some problems with the grocery store tenant at the first project, Alma Plaza. And as a result of that, I think that the council, in this case, adopted a very comprehensive set of conditions to attempt to guard against some of the problems that happened with Alma Village. So for instance, the commercial lease agreement, we do not believe was required to be disclosed to the city, but in this case, there was a specific provision that required that. Also, in this case, the, there was a very specific finding about the current tenant and a, and a backup plan in the event that the, the current tenant was not successful.
Meaning JJNF?
Exactly. Yes, yes. So I do think that, that this provision is very comprehensive. It really places the burden on the developer to provide the same level of services as of 2009. And if it does not do that, there are other provisions that, in the ordinance, again, because of prior learnings from the previous example, that require that there be a continuous operation of the grocery store and that, you know, the city would have the ability to then go forward with code enforcement action if that grocery store were not maintained, and no other use can be placed in that, that building. So, you know, it's, it's certainly up to the council to determine whether the operative findings are met based on the evidence, but I think that this condition is very well crafted to contain a number of safeguards.
For example, could we require that we have a report on their success every, every six months or so?
I, I think that the council could certainly direct the staff to, to do that. If you wanted to incorporate it into the PC ordinance itself, there would be some additional process, but in terms of directing staff to require the applicant to prepare a report or to monitor the existing community benefits, that would be something within your purview tonight.
So, because we have talked about trying to dramatically alter the way that we monitor our PCs. It's currently in a moratorium. We have said, how can we be sure in the future that if we go back into that same system again of a planned community, which means there will be a public benefit, we can be tracking and we can have a sense of surety? I don't know where I'll be on this, but I'm very concerned that we really up the ante on, on where we are as far as monitoring our PCs. And I know that hasn't always been the case, but certainly, this would be one of the cases where, if I were to support it, I would say that, that would be an essential piece of it. And you don't see any reason why we couldn't put that in?
No, I think, I think that's within your purview tonight.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Scharf?
Thank you. Um, I guess I had a one question for the applicant. Maybe the applicant come up, if that's all right with you?
No, that's, I, I think that this is the time to do that, yeah. Thank you.
So I was particularly struck when you said that this is not a deal between the owner and his son.
That's correct.
This is an issue owner between the College Terrace LLC, I'm quoting if I'm quoting incorrectly, tell me, which owned the property for 80-some years and another business entity. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, my confusion is, is that LLCs haven't existed 80 years. So clearly you haven't owned the property as an LLC for 80 years.
That's correct.
That's clearly a misstatement and not true. So, what I guess we're trying to get to is, you have an ownership structure. What do you mean by that?
If I may, council, my name is Michael Polenta. I'm co-council with Ms. Lawson. The reason that she referenced that is because the LLC is a single-member, single-manager LLC. The sole member and manager of the LLC is the Chilcote Family Trust. The Chilcote family has owned the property for 80 years. The reason that the LLC was created was because it was a mandatory condition of the financing for the debt on the property. It is very commonplace in commercial financing structures to require an SPE, or a special purpose entity, but it is a single-member, single-manager entity. The Chilcote family is the family that has owned this block for more than 80 years.
And since you raised the issues, what is the relationship with the son who is going to be running the grocery store? Maybe you could explain to the community what the relationships are and, because obviously people think basically this is the deal with the developer's son running it, and maybe you can explain that clearly and concisely.
There is a, a large misconception with the community that the developer is the owner. That is not the case. As is common with many real estate development projects, we have a fee developer that was hired by the family to develop the project. The lease is between the LLC, which is the ownership, and an entity that was formed by Mr. Jim Smalley, who is the son of Patrick Smalley, who are both principals of the fee developer, not the owner. None of the Smalley's have any ownership interest in College Terrace LLC.
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you. Before you leave, one of my concerns is, is that on packet page 508, under special limitations on land use, including the following, it says that you're supposed to provide us a signed lease for the grocery store, enforceable against the tenant, et cetera, et cetera. I notice that you have a lease in here, but the lease has redactions. There's nothing in here that says you're allowed to redact it. You've redacted most of the information that's interesting. I actually have a hard time voting for this project, frankly, without that information. Will you provide that information?
This discussion occurred when the entitlements were issued in 2010. The prior city attorney advised the council at length as to how and why the redactions were occurring. At the time the entitlements were issued, there was an agreement to lease. It was not a formal lease, and that is why the council input a condition that said that the lease itself had to be approved by the city attorney as a condition of approval. We did that. Ms. Silver did approve the form of lease that was provided. The unredacted version of the lease was provided to Sutie and Associates, as was the other information that was requested.
So the decision needs to be made by the city council, not Sutie and Associates. And one of the things that the ownership received was a larger building in exchange for a public benefit. And part of a public process is transparency. And without bringing the community along and the community understanding, you don't have the transparency. So I'll ask again, are you willing to provide the lease, redacted or unredacted? It's a simple question. It implies, I may vote on this, but it, it comes back to whether or not I think you may met the condition or not.
The, the answer is no.
The answer is no?
The answer is no. We are not providing it into a public forum.
Okay. Fair enough. I also had some questions about comparability to the applicant. The applicant needs to provide a proposed groceries comparable in quality of products and services. So I'm looking on page, packet page 508, under the special limitations on land use. And there's two things. It's comparable in quality of products and services, right?
Councilmember, unfortunately, I don't have your page referenced, so is it within the...
Fair enough. But we agree, those are the, those are the two things. In fact, I believe you cited them when you said to the council...
I just want to make sure.
That's the basis for your decision, comparable in products and services. One of the things I was concerned about, because we have to make the decision, not the consultant, was when the consultant's report said that in terms of comparability in services, we have no basis as a body up here to be able to make that decision because you haven't provided us the information. You've instead said it's, you know, trade secret. I don't understand why it would be trade secret. And I'm having a hard time understanding, if we don't have that information, how I'm supposed to make that decision on comparability of service without having all of the information in the record so I can make that decision.
Councilmember, we've provided you a tremendous amount of information about service. What we haven't provided you is, is the specific names of those folks who will be providing that service. That information, your city attorney, I believe, has, am I correct about that? The consultant has, to review, but that is trade secret protected information because those folks have jobs and currently, we'd like to protect their confidentiality, but we would also like to protect the operations of this business so that, for example, if we provided this to you, someone didn't take the idea and run with it and open it elsewhere in your town.
Seriously? You really believe that? Anyway.
It's actually the loss, sir.
I think that's what I have for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein?
My comments are similar to Councilmember Scharf's, but I want to take a step back first because I think there's been some rewriting of history, and I want to make sure that those here tonight and whoever's watching us on television gets us back where we were. And I realize most of the people in the council weren't here at the time, but first, the council was persuaded to grant the benefits that the applicant requested in exchange for the grocery store because, quite frankly, there was a lot of support for the grocery store, particularly in the College Terrace neighborhood. Now, I can understand why people aren't coming out tonight to repeat what they said five years ago, because of course JJNF is no longer here. But I think it is important to remember that. There was also some talk about what, what we should be doing or not doing, and several of the suggestions were very good, but they're already in the PC ordinance. For example, if you look on section, what is it, four B, the council stated, the one that we've already heard, paragraph six, about the, the standard that we have to use tonight, that the new grocery store, if it's other than John Garcia, has to be of like quality of products and service. But then, we haven't talked so much about paragraph seven, and we refer to it just a little bit, but to say, and I quote, "The grocery store space shall remain in continuous operation as a grocery store. Continuous shall be defined to include brief closure for ordinary business purposes." If the applicant does not comply with those, we already have penalties. Maybe we should enforce them more, more stringently. That's fine. I think in this case, the city would, given the history of this. And the, as we presently have written the ordinance, the failure to comply with the PC ordinance is subject to a fine of $500 a day, and each day would be a new violation. So if the, and we, we can increase that, and it would apply to this one, this particular application, as well as other PCs. But if, even at $500 a day, that's $180,000 a year, which I think most people think is not, not trivial. So they have a continuing obligation to have a grocery store of comparable service and Now, when we put that in, I think everybody was thinking of other potential grocery stores, existing ones. Nobody ever raised the possibility of a startup. And that, to me, is the applicant's problem, not the city's problem. The, if you think about what this would be if the applicant was bringing forth a proposal that the new operator of the grocery store would be any one of the existing entities around here. I don't want to name any of them because it doesn't make any difference. But if, if the applicant was proposing that the new tenant would be the XYZ existing grocery store, it would be very easy for this council to judge whether the quality of products and services were comparable. We could all go to that particular store, or if they had more, more than one of them, and see, is this really a store of JJNF quality, or is it a stop and shop, or something else that we wouldn't find acceptable? We can't do that with, with a startup, for obvious reasons. But we could come close if we had necessary information. We do not. The applicant has chosen so far to not provide us with crucial information. Providing it to a consultant was not ever approved by this council, and I think we all would have voted against it. A consultant, whom may be very good, very professional, I have no idea, is not the same as public officials making a decision. I cannot decide on the basis of the record because the record is inadequate. The applicant has chosen not to provide us with crucial information. They may have good reasons to do that, but that's their problem. My job as a city council member is to determine whether this request is backed up by the record. As to the personnel, they're just blank pieces of paper. As to the finances, they're very crucial things, are not there. I think that many of us have heard the rule of thumb that for a new grocery store, by that, that I don't mean a startup, but any new place for a grocery store, can expect to lose money for 12 to 18 months. So as with many businesses of all kinds, a question is always, does the proposed entity have sufficient capital? Well, that wouldn't be an issue. Again, if we knew, if we were dealing with an existing entity that was proposing to take over this site, we can look them up through Dun &amp; Bradstreet, or if they're a public company on the New York Stock Exchange or NASDAQ, but we don't have that data. We know from sad experience that one of the reasons that Mickey's failed was that it was undercapitalized. The other two new grocery stores in town, the one at Alma Plaza and the one at Edgewood Plaza, appear to be adequately financed because they've been going for, well, for longer periods of time. So a crucial element to me is, is this a properly financed business? I don't know from the record we have before us. I'm not about to rely on a third party. That's not the deal we struck. So I would say that, that I would move that we find that the record is inadequate and we request that if the applicant...
Actually, we are in questions right now, and then I was going to go to action to make sure that people had whatever questions they needed from the applicant.
Well, I think that we've passed, I'm, I'm fine with that, if you wanted that way.
I know I have a couple of questions, so if we could...
Okay.
I'll come right back to you as soon as...
No, no, I'm, I'm, other people can make the motion, but the point is that I think we've been hearing comments more than questions would be that, as admitted.
Well, I think that, anyway, I, I did hear questions from the other two. Councilmember Holman, do you have questions?
Actually, I think mine are, a couple of questions, but most of mine are comments as well. There are a number of things in the consultant's report that, for instance, packet page 604, page six of the consultant's report, where it talks about the deli consultant under number three, and the produce buyer and department manager under number five. And looking to city staff, and another consultant wrote this, the consultant didn't hear, is he? Yes. Okay. Thank you. These issues are raised, but I don't see any commitment on the part of the proposed grocer to commit to having these types of consultants. It just says that, you know, J&amp;A Family Market is currently in contact with, and discussions are taking place, but there's no commitment to engaging this sort of, of expert... are taking place, but there's no commitment to engaging this sort of expert, if you'd like to come up and address those questions. And another one, which I guess would be probably for the applicant, but there's a floor plan for the grocery store, but it also talks about how the produce department would be smaller, but the outdoor market would be a significant part of providing extra produce and enhancing that, but I don't see it on the floor plan, and the floor plan isn't something that we have in front of us that's committed to either. So it all goes to the success and viability of this market being comparable to JJ&amp;F. So if there's any that you can address.
Sure. So my name's Larry Bruscha, I'm president and owner of Soudan Associates, and we have been designing and building independent markets in the San Francisco Bay area for now over 40 years. We have certainly touched just about every independent market that you've gone to, and in direct response, Councilmember Holman, to your question, is that I do know these individuals who have expressed high interest in being part of the J&amp;A Family Market. They currently are employed by other companies, I know them. In fact, I've worked with a couple of them over the years. They're highly qualified, they're involved in very high-profile stores that you know, and there, I did not see any employment contracts that were submitted to me by J&amp;A Family Market, but in talking to the consultants, they all expressed a high level of interest. In regards to the floor plan, that's a very preliminary floor plan. It is not a working drawing floor plan, and so I heard a couple of comments about it being a grab-and-go store, and that's not accurate. Grab-and-go is part of the store, but it will provide all the departments that are currently available that you'll find in the Piazas, or the Bianchini's, or Leonard's. So in terms of the produce, the key individual that J&amp;A Family has selected is actually very extensive in produce. In fact, I have visited the store that he currently is overseeing, stores he's overseeing, and they're very extensive in produce. So based on that floor plan you're looking at, it is a smaller produce, but they plan to have large, more produce out on the El Camino side of the store. But actually, that floor plan is very preliminary. We were not involved in it, we would certainly do it different and expand the produce if we were contracted to do so.
So clarification there, did I understand you to say that the produce person that they have engaged?
They have talked to, yes, and have expressed their interest in hiring this person, and this person has expressed their desire to be part of it.
And that's as far as it's gone?
Yes.
Okay. I think my questions fall in line with those of the prior speakers, so I'll stop there with questions. I have comments coming up.
Thank you. Councilmember Berman?
So if I could just get a little more clarity on the structure of the arrangements between the owner, the developers, and the developer's son. So the owner of the land is the Chilcote Family Trust, was that, did I catch that correctly?
It is the Chilcote Family Trust.
Chilcote Family Trust, thank you.
The fee title is held in the LLC, but the LLC is owned by the Chilcote Family Trust.
Gotcha. And the developer was hired to build the property?
That is correct.
And now the developer's son wants to run the grocery store, own and manage the grocery store?
Yeah, so perhaps I can answer that by giving a little bit more information, and if I-
Sure, as long as you don't mind if I cut you off, if I feel like you're going a little too far afield.
No, no, that's perfectly acceptable. As it relates to the lease that the owner's son, through the entity, J&amp;A Family's Markets, has entered into with the owner, College Terrace Center LLC, it is the exact same business transaction that was agreed to by JJ&amp;F.
Mm-hmm.
Exact, nothing is different, other than the tenant.
Okay, thank you. I'm not entirely familiar with these types of arrangements. Once the developer, the developer was hired to build the building, once they build the building, is their relationship with the owner finished, or does that relationship continue through the, you know, into years into the future?
So there are different roles that a fee developer can play.
Mm-hmm.
But the fee developer is hired to develop the project.
Okay.
And then they step out.
Okay.
There are other roles for ongoing management, a property manager, a leasing broker.
But that's different from-
Different from, different from, but yes, for fee developer purposes, and-
Once they build the project, they're out.
Yes, they're out. And the name of the entity that's the fee developer is 2100 Ventures, I haven't mentioned that if anybody wants, but it's, effectively, it's the Smalley's.
What, and now, and I forget his name, but the Smalley's son wants to run the grocery store, this is kind of coming out of nowhere, what has he done in the past, and this might have been in the report, and I glanced over it, but what's his, what's his career been to date?
Yeah, so it's important to add one piece of information that has been, again, misrepresented in some of the comments that have come up thus far. There's an assumption that the ownership has not looked anywhere else other than J&amp;A Family's Markets. That is an incorrect assumption. From the day that Mr. Garcia advised the ownership that he was no longer interested in coming back to run a grocery store as JJ&amp;F or any other entity that he may have, we have had commercial real estate brokers pounding the pavement, trying to find a established grocer that would enter into a lease on the same terms that Mr. Garcia had agreed upon. To this day, we're still looking for that grocer, that established grocer, to come forward.
Mm-hmm.
No one has. There have been discussions with many of the grocers that are in Palo Alto currently. As it relates to your question, Mr. Smalley has never run a grocery store, we acknowledge that from day one. He has had other businesses, including a construction company, as well as being part of a property management firm, and part of the fee developer. So he's been around real estate for many years.
Mm-hmm.
For the purposes of the grocery store, in order for him to establish any viability of that business succeeding, he went out and found, as was indicated by the consultant-
Sure.
People that have 20-plus years of experience. He doesn't have it.
Understood.
We're not suggesting that he does.
No, and I appreciate that, and I wasn't trying to imply that he does, but you've kind of answered my next question, was why on earth would he want to run a grocery store? And I'm inferring from your answer to the last question, because they need somebody to run a grocery store, or to own and manage the grocery store.
Partially, but I wouldn't want to speak for him. If you'd like him to come up and speak, he can answer that question for you, but it is also because of the belief that the grocery store is a vital component, a required component of this project.
Mm-hmm.
Given the location, the orientation, which is honestly better than what JJ&amp;F had because it's going to have an El Camino face, there is a much greater likelihood that this will be a very successful venture.
Mm-hmm.
That's why he is making the decision to step into this role.
Mm-hmm.
Because he is convinced that this will succeed.
So, and let me ask Mr. Smalley, who I'm assuming is here, if he wants to come up and talk, feel free. If you're not comfortable with it, no worries at all, your representation is provided eloquent answers.
Let me, let's get an introduction. You are the, and you're the leaseholder of the grocery store, so.
J&amp;A Family Market.
And you have some questions for him?
So the question that I was just asking was, you know, why do you want to run a grocery store, or this grocery store?
Well, to go back a little history, when we got approved by council, we started moving forward, JJ&amp;F hasn't been around since 2010. When the Garcia's said, hey, nobody's coming to shop here anymore, it's rundown, it's obsolete, we're going out of business, we're looking for people to buy it, I contacted the people I knew in the grocery industry and said, here's the location, it's not very good now, but let's move in now, run it until the buildings are going to get demoed, and get our feet wet. And then if John doesn't come back, we take it and we run with it.
Mm-hmm.
And instead, the Garcia's decided to go forward with Jojos, which, and people in the neighborhood will probably tell you, was a disaster.
Mm-hmm.
It, you know, it just didn't work out well at all, and, you know, the buildings got demoed, we all looked at everything, and we still wanted to come back and do it. And my personal reason for doing it is, I don't want it to be like Alma Plaza, I don't want it to be like Mickey's. Everybody brings up, it's a startup. I'm sorry, but your whole city here is based off of startups.
Mm-hmm.
Well, what made Palo Alto Silicon Valley your startups?
Mm-hmm.
You know, everybody's wanting to crucify me because I want to take a shot at this and make it work. You know, I don't want to just open the doors and put all my time, effort, money into it, and then walk away.
Mm-hmm.
That makes no sense. You know, I have not run a grocery store, but I know customer service, I've done lots of customer service jobs, and that's what it's going to be all about.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody talks about, oh, well, you know, we walked in and people said hello, the Garcia's knew us. That's what I want to do.
Mm-hmm.
I want to be there seven days a week, I want to be the, you know, a greeter, I want it to be a nice, warm, friendly atmosphere, and be a successful grocery store.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. So I have a couple of questions for staff. It's easy for us to judge the quality of the goods and the services when the store opens. It's a lot more difficult to continue to analyze that on a periodic basis. You know, what are your all's suggestions for how we go about doing, is it necessary, or, you know, is that a part of the PC that it be analyzed on a periodic basis, or was it just that the quality of the goods and services be comparable to JJ&amp;F on day one? And assuming or hoping that it was necessary that it continue that, how do we go about analyzing that, and, yeah?
Thank you, Councilmember Berman. To answer your question, I think the quality of goods and services is something that we would look to monitor, and I think Vice Mayor Niss had the suggestion that we take that on as, you know, as a responsibility to follow through on this PC ordinance and make sure that it actually delivers on the, you know, the public benefit that was included, and as Kara Silver indicated earlier, this ordinance tries to do a better job than earlier PC ordinances, and laying out that the space can't be used for other purposes, that, you know, there's some things in here that would help us achieve a better monitoring and enforcement outcome than in the past.
If I could just add to that, the lease does, or the PC does distinguish between the initial finding that the council needs to make, which is that the goods and services when the store opens are comparable to that, in effect, in 2009. Of course, the PC envisioned that the applicant would come to you with this, you know, much, much more quickly than it did. There was a, you know, a recession, which was not anticipated, but the, the condition does not require that the goods and services stay static. Of course, you want to respond to, you know, market trends and that type of thing. What the conditions do require is that it's a continuous operation of a neighborhood-serving grocery store.
Okay, and as I'm sure you can imagine, my concern isn't, you know, for the goods and services to stay static, my concern is about them diminishing dramatically as the, you know, grocery store moves on, and so I'd want to, you know, make sure to put stipulations in place that, you know, there's some way that we can monitor that and, you know, change course if that does, or levy fines if that does happen. But I'll save comments for the next round. Thanks.
Councilmember Burt?
Well, let me first start with a follow-up to that last line of questioning, because, Hillary, you had talked about responding to the vice mayor's questions about maintaining the goods and services by having a periodic monitoring, but what happens if they deteriorate?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. I think Ms. Silver corrected me on that, it's not the quality of goods and services that we monitor, it would be the continuous operation of the store, so.
So that has, under the existing ordinance, it has no value, the monitoring?
I would, I would think that what is emergent in the council's conversation is, one, the need to be able to continuously assess this. I don't think we've even begun to start to touch on what the consequences of meeting or failing to meet those tests are, and I'm expecting-
Well, let's begin, let's begin to touch upon that. So under our current PC ordinance, we don't have explicit ramifications that occur if either there's not continuous operation, or if there are goods and services that have a significant deterioration. We have an upcoming council review of PC ordinances. If we were to look at strengthening the consequences for non-compliance to PC ordinances in general, we could do that, and it would apply to the range of PC ordinances that are already in place, is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Burt, that is an option. When you look at PC reform, is to look at remedies and consequences, and to try to put forth something that's more refined in that area for the PCs that have been approved in Palo Alto. And one of the questions that has arisen is, if there is a change to the type of remedies that would apply for a PC violation, would that, could that apply to already-approved and PCs that are, have been approved and built and are in operation? And certainly, it could do that, and it, in fact, would do that. We would put forth an ordinance that would apply prospectively to violations that may develop in the future. And just a word to synthesize the comments that have been made by the planning staff and legal staff on the enforcement of these conditions. These conditions have to be read together in a harmonious way, and certainly, it's not a precise, a six-month monitoring or annual monitoring, it's not a tool that's tremendously precise under these conditions, but it's not the case that it is merely adequate to operate some market at the site. We would take the position that the requirement of the spirit of the market, being a high customer service market, you know, with a high quality of local products, is a part of this PC and would be a continuing obligation, and we would be looking to enforce that.
So that's an interpretation of the existing PC. That leads to a next question. Some of my colleagues have been talking about modifications to this PC. Do we have any ability to modify this PC?
So, Councilmember Burt, that is an interesting question. It has been posed by a number of council members in the last few days, as the council has been thinking very hard about implementing the existing PC provision, and the difficulties that are faced in terms of lack of complete information in order for the council to feel confident that it can exercise its discretion to implement the existing provision. It's certainly modification to the ordinance is not on your agenda tonight. If it is something that the council is interested in looking at, we can say as a general matter that this is a zoning matter, and the council does retain discretion over zoning. You know, there have been various things said about vested rights, but the city's position, and the position of all cities, is clear on this point, that rights vest when building permit is issued, and there's substantial expenditures in reliance thereon, and it's our position that that has not occurred. That said, you know, we would want to look carefully at any modification, and, you know, would need some time to analyze that procedure.
Okay. And in the staff questions and responses from the applicant on page, packet page 580, attachment E, there's a statement similar to what the applicant said tonight, that "The lease and rent structure is identical to that provided and accepted by John Garcia, which the city attorney has reviewed and approved." And I wasn't clear from this whether the applicant was saying that the city attorney had reviewed and approved the current lease, or the prior lease, so that's the first question.
Well, Kara can elaborate, but what we did to implement that provision of the PC is we reviewed the form of the lease, and determined that this lease is a commercial, commercially customary lease of this type, and made our determination on that basis. We did not review the substantive terms, which, as you've noted, have been redacted. And I think as the council's discussion has gone forward, there are reasons why at least some of those terms may be relevant to the discretion that the council's being asked to exercise tonight.
But the applicant, so, under the current lease, you didn't look at the rent structure, for instance, but then I'll assume that the applicant's saying that the redacted lease is the same as the prior lease to the Garcia's- as the prior lease to the Garcias, and that's what I understood them to say orally. Did we review the rent structure and the balance of the lease unredacted with the prior Garcia lease?
No, both leases, it's my understanding, contained a redaction of the rent amount. The term was there, but the rent amount was not there.
I see the applicant's attorney indicating he wants to respond to that, and I want to ask the mayor if that's okay.
I'm sorry. What was that again?
Whether, were you wanting to try and respond to that? Can the applicant's attorney respond to clarify my question here?
Of course.
Okay.
Thank you very much for letting me respond. What I wanted to point out was the reason that the original form of agreement to lease, and I am distinguishing between the agreement to lease, which was what was in place at the time that the entitlements were issued, and the form of lease that Ms. Silver approved. It was at John Garcia's express request, for again, trade secret and confidentiality reasons, that all of those business terms be redacted.
I understand that. So this attachment E., who wrote the responses to staff?
I'm sorry, I don't have attachment E. in front of me.
Well, so attachment E. is characterized as staff questions and responses from grocery tenant.
It's Mr. Smiley talking about the specific questions that were raised by staff.
Yeah, there were a series of, I don't know how many questions, 12 questions and responses from the, from the grocery tenant. So was it you who wrote these or?
Yeah.
Okay. So in that case, I'll be a little more lax because you're not an attorney. But it states here in plain language that really, I say a little more lax because this is language that I think any of us should be able to understand. The lease and rent structure is identical to that provided to and accepted by John Garcia. That may very well be true. We have no way of knowing that because the prior one was redacted. It goes on to say, which the city attorney has reviewed and approved. We've just heard our city attorney state that that in fact did not occur.
With all due respect, that is not correct.
What's not correct?
Your comment that the city attorney did not review and approve it. We have written documentation from Ms. Silver where she confirms that she reviewed and approved the form of lease.
Oh, excuse me. You just interjected something, the form, and this says rent structure. Now, what I heard from Ms. Silver is that there were redactions in that lease. And among those redactions, critical redactions, were the rent structure. And you just claimed that what she said was not true, and you interjected that it was the form of the lease, which in anybody's mind is quite different from the specifics of the lease.
The condition of approval, and I will defer to Ms. Silver to confirm this or refute this, but the condition of approval was the city attorney's approval of the form of lease.
And that's not what is stated here, and it's not what she said a moment ago and what you claim that she had spoken inaccurately about.
Pat, what page are you on? I'm just sorry for this.
I'm on packet page 580. I'll leave that point for the moment.
Yep, thank you.
Those are not one and the same. The form and the substance are not the same. I've looked at leases for decades, and I know the difference between the form of a lease and what you fill in that really matters on the terms. And they're not the same. And anybody who claims it, I just, that starts to undermine credibility tonight. So we have not had the research on other grocers divulged. Why, has the applicant stated why that research is somehow confidential? Are we aware of the, what's the basis for a claim of confidentiality of a market research?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Burt, that perhaps that's a question for the applicant. Our charge was to evaluate the proposed tenant that was presented to us and how it was compared in quality and service to JJNF.
Well, and the business plan was part of that, right?
That's right.
I mean, that's how we, we had the, our consultant, wasn't part of that review of the business plan looking at the market research, or was that separate from the business plan?
That would be a question for the consultant.
Okay. Well, I'll wait for the moment on that. So I want to understand a little bit more on this relationship between the developer and the tenant. Because for one thing, when I, when I look at the lease terms, even in the redacted state, there's significant weight placed to the guarantor of the lease. And I haven't heard anybody speak about the guarantor. Do we have any understanding of what's the relationship to the guarantor? Because it looks like in the absence of the guarantor, this lease wouldn't go forward. Do we know anything about that?
It would probably be a more appropriate question for the applicant.
Okay. So, may I, may I? So can I have some additional explanation as to a couple of things on this? What's the relationship of the guarantor to this lease? Why is that critical to making that happen? And then the second thing I want to understand is, I heard, and I forgot your first name. Jim Smiley, state that the, the, he has a commitment to having a successful grocery store, but you had also stated that no other grocer was interested in this site under the terms that the Garcias had agreed to. So I have two questions related to that. One is, if that's the case, why would Mr. Smiley be able to be successful at this site under those terms and other proven successful grocers would not? And my second question is, why were those the only terms offered to established grocers for this site? I don't get what mandated that you couldn't change those to being more favorable to induce a grocer of established experience and reputation.
Can I start with the guarantee question? So we have J&amp;A Family Markets, which is a corporation. The guarantor of the lease is Mr. Jim Smiley.
Okay.
As it relates to the business terms that were agreed upon with JJNF, we had as part of the entitlement process an agreement to lease that had virtually all of the business terms already negotiated. The reason that Mr. Smiley agreed to step in and accept all of those terms was in the hope that that would be the most appropriate response for a replacement tenant to JJ&amp;A because the city council had already assessed it under the terms of the agreement to lease. In my prior comments about the brokers that have been talking to all of the other grocers that are out there trying to gain interest in this particular site, it has not been limited to just the terms that were included in the agreement to lease with Mr. Garcia and JJNF. It's been an open book. Anybody can come in and propose any terms they want. No grocer has proposed any business terms to lease that particular space with the exception of J&amp;A Family Markets since Mr. Garcia advised the ownership in August of last year that he was not interested in coming back.
So why would Mr. Smiley here be able to be successful under those terms and no established grocer be able to do so?
I can't speculate on why an established grocer would not be interested.
And in your prior comments, you hadn't included that any reference, in fact, you had made a statement that, that the terms that had been offered to Mr. Garcia were offered to a series of other grocers. I would have assumed that at that point in time that you'd say, and we offered even better terms to them, and they still wouldn't take it. You didn't make that statement earlier until I raised this question. But have you, so it's one thing for you to say, make us a proposal to anybody else. It's another thing for, for the developer or the owner, and we can't quite tell who's initiating this agreement with Mr. Smiley because there's, you know, why does, why the coincidence that the developer's son is going to enter an agreement with the owners? I mean, what's that relationship? Why, why does that coincidence occur?
I have tried to answer that question in the past, but I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're asking me to respond to. You're asking the relationship.
Well, we have, you clarified.
Can I take this table back for a minute? These questions seem to be slightly redundant, and we've got more lights on. Could you maybe wrap up the questions from here? Thank you.
Okay. I don't think they're redundant, but I will go ahead and defer continuing with them. Thank you. So I guess I have one final question more toward our staff. We were able to hire a consultant to review the business plan so that certain things were reviewed under confidentiality, correct? Why couldn't our staff also agree to those same confidentiality terms and have those, that information divulged to us?
Councilmember Burt, maybe the city attorney can help with this, but at least at the planning staff perspective, our feeling was that if we received this confidential information, it would be part of the public record, and we would have to make it public to anyone who requested it. So we didn't receive it and therefore didn't disclose it. And I think, you know, if this had been an easy decision, we would have been able to make it at the staff level. You know, I apologize.
Okay. So is that, is that basically the case, that if we had, if our staff signed a confidentiality agreement to be able to review this information, or we basically couldn't do such a thing?
Right, right. So I think, I think there may be a mechanism for us to receive confidential information. We certainly do that, have done that in other contexts. I'm thinking of another local business that has confidential trade secrets that have been shared under an agreement that does protect those items. I would add another element to this, which is that your city staff are not experts in the grocery business. And so that was also part of thinking that there was a role for an expert consultant who did have, you know, specific...
And I'm not asserting that if our staff had had this information, it would have substituted for our interest in having an outside consultant, but I would see that it would complement.
If I just might add, I think that, you know, the city attorney has added maybe, you know, a narrow opening as it relates to this confidentiality issue. But I think as the planning staff was, was working through this, the, not only the potential requirements of the law, but the, the culture we have in Palo Alto in particular around a project that has a lot of public concern and sensitivity, really sort of put us in a position of being able to say, we're not in a position to engage in a confidentiality agreement. And therefore, in one sense, we were sort of, you know, our hands were somewhat tied obviously to be able to communicate.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah. So one final quick comment. A lot of this, whether this operator is qualified is based upon certain key employees with real expertise in the field. We're not talking cashiers. We're talking about the key employees. And the consultant explained that he's seen who these people are, that the Smiley's, Mr. Smiley has shown interest, they've shown interest in this operation, and there's, there are no contract terms. So I don't understand how the consultant or we can make any determination that that would come toward any likelihood, what's more a certainty, that that ultimately would be a hire until you've had some preliminary agreement on, on terms. I do understand and respect the interest of those prospective employees to keep their positions and names confidential while they're still under employment. But, but this was granted to our consultant under a confidentiality, and it appears that there's no, no, nothing other than they've all talked and like each other, and if there were some financial terms that could be agreed to, they very well might get hired. So that's what we're resting on.
Okay. I'm looking at the hour is late. We have to take the airport up tonight. And so if we can move a little more quickly through our questions, Councilmember Price?
Yes, a couple of concerns I've had have been expressed and questions have been raised by colleagues. I think one of my concerns is the fact that we, because of the nature of the information that we've received, and I appreciate very much all the detail that's been given to us as to the reasons why we have certain information and not by the applicant and by the staff as well. But the fact that there have not been a lot of other interested, experienced parties basically stepping up for this particular use at this particular location does cause me some concern. The other comment, more than a question, is related to something that a couple of colleagues have mentioned, which is the issue of ongoing monitoring. I realize that in some of our PC zones, we haven't had sufficient language that really details appropriate level of, you know, language and direction regarding monitoring. And my concern here is, what I'm hearing from staff is that purely the operation, ongoing operation, is kind of what we're looking at. But in terms of measure of quality and services, it would really be ideal if we had a situation where we had, not really elaborate, but some comments about baseline conditions and two or three performance measures which indicate is in fact, are the quality of services and the products provided at this location being maintained at a high quality? And I think several of my colleagues have made comments about that. So those are the misgivings I have and comments I have. I'm also concerned that we do need to resolve this one way or the other because we can't keep having this remain in limbo. And I think for the applicant, for the potential leasing, for the community members, et cetera, some action needs to be taken. So those are some general observations. And I think every one of us here wants a successful market at that location, and the community wants that, but it does have some challenges.
Councilmember Klein, I promised I would return to you for a motion. If you'd like to make that, this is the time.
I don't feel any great ownership with the motion, but I, but I'm glad to move that the council finds that the applicant has not submitted sufficient information for us to make a determination as required as to whether the proposed operator of the market would be of the same quality of financial and services as JJNF.
All right. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Just very briefly, because I'm very concerned about the time, and I know that we have to take our next item up, that I just feel that, as I stated earlier, that the burden is on the applicant to show us that the proposal will be of the same quality, products and services, as JJNF has. And your insistence on keeping everything confidential makes it really impossible for the council, the council, and that's what's in the, in the, we're the city, makes it impossible for us to make that determination. it impossible for us to make that determination. So I think that you need to go back and figure out how to do that, and then we can make a determination. But I can't find, make those findings now on the basis of what I have before me.
Councilmember Scharf, would you like to speak to your second?
I would. Okay. First of all, I'd just like, sorry. I'd like to just clarify the motion with Councilmember Klein. It's a vision to make determination that the operator is the same market service as JJ. I think we should use the same language in item number six, which says that the proposed grocery tenant is, is of comparable in quality of products and services as JJ and F as it existed and operated on December.
Agreed.
I would like to just match that language identically.
Correct. And that was my intention.
Great. Yeah, you know, I was very disappointed in the, in the applicant's unwillingness to, to share the lease terms, frankly, and I think that's called out in there. I'm very disappointed the applicant was unwilling to provide, you know, the information to our consultants. You know, we have to make a decision based on our record here, and without the information, it's impossible to make that decision. And so I would encourage the applicant to come back, to be open and transparent, to let the community know exactly what they're looking for, and, and to make the record. And then we can make a decision based on that, whereas right now, we just simply do not have enough information to make that decision.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I will definitely be supporting the motion, and I think it may have been this project, when I was on the commission and voted against this project, but I think it was, I think it was Arthur Keller on this project, I believe it was, who said, you're asking us to make a faith-based decision. And I think that's what we're looking at tonight, whether it was this project or not, where he said that. As other colleagues have said, there's just not enough information here. And yes, this is a town that has known for its startups, but this is not a private venture. This is a public benefit. So it has very different consequences if it should not fail. The track, the line of questioning that others have followed too, which is, you know, who did you go to in three years since this was approved? Who were the other grocers that you went to? What is that record? And it's not even clear to me that when it stated that no one came to us with a proposal of any sort, that would, you know, that they would take this site, well, they need to be married up. Who were you talking to and were you waiting for them to come to you? Or there's just a lot of vagary there that I'm not comfortable with. And I think it was Councilmember Klein who said that this is a third-party entity, the consultant, and this is not any comment on the consultant's capabilities, but it's an entity that's not known to us, we didn't approve a contract, we don't know that person, even our city staff didn't have access to this information. So to me, it would be, seems to me that it would be an abdication of our responsibilities if we deferred a decision with all the, no more information than we have to a third party. It seems like really an inappropriate process that, you know, the applicant has put us in that position to where we, I think, have to make this, make this determination. So as has been stated, I hope you'll come back, but we need more information, more transparency. This is transparency like twice removed, and that's not what about, that's not what city government's about, and not the kind of decision-making that we can, we can engage in.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, I would like to propose an addition to the motion. Just add the words at the end and ask staff to expedite a council discussion of fines on existing PCs.
Well, isn't it coming to us in two weeks?
The PC reform item is a study session at the Planning Commission this week, and our thought was to come to council on October 6th.
Yeah, I guess I'm just asking for a portion of that on existing PCs rather than the whole question of PCs.
Can I ask if, this is not before us tonight, to go through the PC process, we're just up or down on the, on this particular lease?
No, I understand Councilmember Schmidt's question to be about scheduling of the future item.
Right.
And Planning Director has reminded that the item is set on your tentative calendar for early October, and I would suggest council that with all of the very complex items you have before you, that going twice around that is not the best use of staff's time or the council's limited agenda time.
Right. But I also noticed that the maker has not accepted that, and so we can stay with this. Yeah. Okay, thank you. I would, I want to make a couple of comments. You know, JJ and F, you know, wasn't my neighborhood grocery store, but it was one of the closest ones that I could get to from where I live. And there for 60 years, this is going to be hard to replicate. It's really going to be hard to replicate. And yet I do know, because I've worked with the College Terrace neighborhood, you have one of the best neighborhoods there to reach out to, a really solid College Terrace Neighborhood Association. They would love to talk to you. I know they would love to talk to you because I know that the neighbors down in Edgewood Plaza would love to talk to the Fresh Market down there to try to tweak it just a little bit. That would probably make it a very successful grocery store there now that is struggling a bit. So I guess for me, I don't have one neighbor here supporting this. And this is, like I say, these are, these are neighbors that will tell you what they want, what they think it will look like, because I think to get past some of the service interests that are, that have been historic from that particular location with JJ and F, you're not going to be able to replicate that until you've been in business for 60 years, and then you'll have that track record. But you certainly seem earnest in trying to provide that. So I would, so I think that I'm going to have to support the motion this evening, but I would really suggest that, you know, once some, once you come back with a tenant, to make sure that you have done that outreach into the neighborhood, they would be willing to talk to you and work with you and, and get that connectivity so that it does generate that kind of neighborhood grocery store that they've missed since, since JJ and F has gone out of business and long for again. So that would be my recommendation, because I would like to hear that kind of support from the neighborhood, in addition to making sure that we have the checkoff list that we have with whether it's the same quality and service. So with that, let's go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously, and that will be to submit more information on the, on the possible tenant and grocery store. Now, we have one more item to take up tonight, which is the airport, and we have staff here. So I'm going to look to colleagues to say, can we just push through and get the airport project complete tonight? I did not do a 10 o'clock check-in, which I should-
Can we have a short staff report? I mean, the-
And how about short comments from, yeah, and-
You probably do, don't you?
And measured comments from, from colleagues?
Big commitment will be done by 11:30.
Okay, we will be done 20 minutes, so done by 11, 11:30. So let's go ahead and take this item up. Yeah. With this, this is, item number of 11 is the transfer of the Palo Alto Airport operations from Santa Clara County to City of Palo Alto.
And soon. Yeah, soon.
Staff?
See Mr. Chairman.
So let me, while you get set up, I'll go ahead and read our script. In 2007, council directed the city to work with Santa Clara County to terminate the 50-year land lease agreement at Palo Alto Airport early. Tonight, staff is recommending council approve a complex set of documents which will transfer operations and control of PAO to the city. There are three resolutions and one ordinance. There's a resolution to approve the county transfer of authority and licenses over to the city. There's resolutions approving Palo Alto Airport fees and charges, resolution approving applications for county airport rules and regulations and aviation license agreements to the PAO during 2015. And then finally, an ordinance amending the municipal code to add general aviation airport definitions and, and opt that these, and adopt the new fees and charges. And there is an at places memo on this. After council action, staff will seek approval from the FAA and State Lands Commission for final approval and transfer. The proposed documents for these agencies are included in our packet. They may need minor and/or insubstantial changes for final approval. Staff requests authority for council to make these types of final adjustments to documents with this action. So I'm going to turn this over for staff presentation. We already have a couple of speakers on this, and then we will bring it back to council for action. Thank you. Andrew or Mike?
Good evening, Mayor Shepherd and members of City Council. Mike Sardar, Public Works Director. I have with me tonight our airport manager, Andy Swanson, as well as Grant Colling from our city attorney's office, who's been working with us on making this happen. We also have outside counsel with us, Peter Kirsch, he's sitting in the, in the audience in case there are any questions. Andy's been working with us since April of last year to make this happen. We're very pleased to bring this to you tonight. As you recall, we gave you an update report back in May, the status of the takeover that went through all the steps that we've been going through and the steps that we continue to need to take to actually see the transfer happen. We anticipated in May that we would bring back this action to you in August, and so here we are. And for your point of reference, the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors approved the transfer agreement last week. So with that, Andy has a short presentation, and then we'll be open for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Swanson, City of Palo Alto Airport Manager, Public Works. It's with pleasure to bring this item back to council. It, over the last year and a half, getting all of the agencies, working with multiple different groups to do this, but I also have to recognize a lot of work that was done way before we started this portion of this. I think it goes back to the Palo Alto Working Group, some reports that were generated after that, some consultants developed and got us here tonight. So I'm going to start out with just kind of brief points, just in general about the airport. The airport is, it's the third busiest airport in the Bay Area, actually in the region. It's 180,000 operations a year. So it's a very busy airport. It plays a very important role as reliever airport, part of the, the actual transportation system. And so it's, it's, plays a role more than just in the local area, but all part of, it's all part of the transportation system with over 180,000 operations. The role includes Stanford Life Flight, the refueling, Angel Flight. It plays a role during emergency disaster relief, and that's just a little kind of overview, a kind of, some of the miss, maybe misunderstanding sometimes of the role that the airport plays. So I just wanted to bring that up. I'll get right into this, because I know it's late. So through the process, we, we developed a budget for this year. And through, throughout the process of getting this plan here tonight, the general fund loan is currently at 1.6 million. That was total, includes this year's budget of a loan of 560,000. That also, in, in 2017, the FBO leases will come up and we'll be able to renegotiate and actually go out for an RFP for those, for those two major land leaseholders on the airport. They operate basically as a, almost a third party, so the actual businesses that are operating out of there are going through like a third-party leasing. So they're quite, leases are quite old, so that will give us an opportunity, and we projected in 2018, we will be in the black and be able to actually start paying back the loan. So I just wanted to report that out, and that leads into my next slide here, sorry. Okay, so throughout this process of getting everything organized and so that we would be eligible for grant funding, also, we had one capital improvement project, I'm kind of getting ahead of myself a little here. The capital improvement project that we had was the terminal building. It's a very aging building. It's, we did it, our facilities department looked at it, and it's a temporary building. It's been there for almost, almost 50 years. It would cost more to do the maintenance on it than to replace it. So the recommendation was to replace it. It was part of the 2015 budget. What was not in the 2015 budget and in the capital plan was the runway rehabilitation and taxiway project. That will have, it will show up in the budget, will be back with, the county has offered or will be paying the match money for that. So there'll be no cost to the city for the project. And bids were in, so we'll be back with the recommendation for that at a later date. Okay, and that just, okay, so the process that's gone on so far, as Mike pointed out, that the approval by the county took place last week on the item that's in front of you and the documents to transfer the airport. So it's here tonight for the city's consideration, and then on Friday, August 15th, it goes to the State Lands Commission, because we were required to have a, at least a 20-year lease to be eligible for the federal process and to be a sponsor. So for them to consider us and allow us to operate as an airport, we had to be, we had to have at least 20 years. So we're in the process of actually a 25-year lease so that each year for projects, we would be eligible until we can work with the State Lands Commission to identify the actual, there's a dispute on who owns the land. And it's, I have to say, the State Lands Commission has really worked very well with us to make sure to get this item and move forward so that we will be eligible for funding this year. And then after that takes place, it falls to the FAA to make decisions, and we're very optimal, it's optimal, our optimum time would be, it would take place in the next week to two weeks, and we have every indication that should take place, if possibly sooner. We just can't predict that, which would make us eligible for the grants and the runway taxiway project. Okay, so the actions adopted for tonight are the four, the resolution to approve four agreements transferring Palo Alto Airport from the city, from the county to the city. Second is an ordinance approving, adopting the Palo Alto fees and charges by resolution, adding general aviation airports, the definition. Three would be resolution approving the FY 2015 Palo Alto fees and charges. And fourth would be a resolution approving applications for both county, county airports' rules and regulations and licensing agreement for general aviation at, at Palo Alto Airport for FY 2015. That concludes what we have for you here tonight. If you have questions?
Councilmember Schmidt, I was going to go out to the public. Did you have any disclosure or something that you needed? You have your light on?
After the public.
After the public, okay. I have three speakers from the public. You all have three minutes to speak on this item. Alberto Rossi to be followed by Ralph Britton.
Good evening, Mayor and Counselor. My name is Alberto Rossi. I'd just like to hello, my name is Alberto Rossi. I have been-
Could you, yeah, thank you.
I have been working in, at Rossi Aircraft Incorporated located at Palo Alto Airport since 1983. We are an FAA Federal Aviation Administration certified repair station, a fixed base operator that includes service such as maintenance for local and regional aircrafts based at Palo Alto Airport and the surrounding areas. We provide fuel service, all general aviation, fixing, wing airplanes, helicopters, and visitor pilots 24 hours and seven days a week. We offer an emergency fuel service, including Stanford Hospital, Life Flight, and many other air ambulance companies from California and- and at different states. We have done this for more than 20 years. We also provide management and fly many corporate aircraft customers in the local area and support many business in Palo Alto and the surroundings, San Jose and San Francisco and Bay Area. I feel the community of Palo Alto should realize the importance of having the airport so close and access to the Stanford Hospital and University and any local emergency that may be occurred. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ralph Britton to be followed by Bob Lennox.
Good evening, Mayor Shepherd and council members. I'm Ralph Britton, Palo Alto Airport Association President, and also co-chair, or was co-chair, of the former Palo Alto Airport Working Group. And I'm pleased that we are at last now able to act on the Palo Alto Airport Working Group recommendation made in 2007. At that time, the airport was, it was recognized that the airport was deteriorating under council, under county management. And the recommendation was that the city take over operation of the airport as soon as possible. Well, it turned out it's taken a lot longer because we leave naively expected that it was more, that it was a much, that it was a simple process. The county airport operator told us, "Well, all you need to do is sign the papers, and we'll just transfer it right away." Well, that wasn't exactly what happened. And the, as you see from the size of your document, that there was a much more complicated process than, than that. But I'd like to commend the staff, and Andy Swanson and the staff, well, the city staff, too numerous, too numerous to mention by name. But anyway, they did a fabulous job to get, to work through this thing. And I appreciate city manager Jim Keen's interest and attention to the, to the details that, and paid, and is paying such close attention to the process, which was indeed complex. I'd like to say that the Palo Alto Airport Association represents the airport community. And as you can see, there's a number of people here. I think just about everybody left in the room here, airport association people. And the, we're committed to make the airport the best possible airport. And that includes working with the Baylands supporters to ensure that the Baylands visitor will have an improved experience as well as the people who work in the airport. And we're anxious to work with the Baylands community to ensure that the developments are really to everyone's benefit. So I urge you to support the resolutions that are recommended. And as, as we say, it has to be done quickly because there is FAA money that we hope we can get if we get this transfer process taken care of this month. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Bob Lennox?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and council members. I'm going to do the proverbial throw it away because the hour is late. So I just want to say in advance, thank you very much. This has been, as Ralph said, a long, an arduous process. And I want to give our minister without portfolio, a portfolio and airport, as soon as possible. He's done a bang-up job. And again, kudos to the rest of the staff because they have worked very, very hard and diligently on this. And I'm looking forward to bringing Palo Alto Airport into the 21st century and making it a signature gateway to our community instead of the embarrassment that it is today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah, thanks for all the work and getting us here. Just one quick question. I noticed on page 623 that in 1978, the county assumed principal duty for maintaining the levee. And this will now be transferred to the city. The city understands it will undertake the primary responsibility for the maintenance and repair of the levees. Now, this is a unique feature. The levees are usually not maintained and taken care of by the city. But we are assuming responsibility for the levee. Is that right?
That's correct, Councilmember Schmidt. We're talking about, and sorry, we don't have a picture up on the screen, but we're talking about the piece of levee that runs parallel to the runway--
Right.
--which the county has maintained in the past. And they actually, in fact, just this last couple months, have done some repairs to that levee that the, at the water district's request, so.
Yeah, now, I worry a little bit. There's another clause in here that says money cannot be transferred from the airport to the general fund. Is the city's responsibility through the general fund?
No, that would not be the case. We would be using airport revenue, airport enterprise funds to maintain that levee.
Okay. And is this a permanent part of the deal? Or is it a temporary contract?
The levee is, is a permanent part of the airport and the airport operation.
Okay.
It protects the runway from, you know, the tidal, tidal action.
Right. But you don't anticipate this to be a big surprising cost as we move into the future?
No, we do not. The levee was of majorly, major reconstruction occurred about five years ago, which the county did. This recent round was just in the thousands of dollars to do some basically squirrel bores, bore holes, I kind of think, just filling those kinds of gaps.
Good.
Fairly routine maintenance.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes, thank you. My question is to the city attorney. Somewhere in these thousands of pages, there's a reference to resolving the ownership of the land with the State Lands Commission. I think you say that sometime in the next 12 to 18 months, there'd somehow be a litigation initiated to resolve who owns what.
Grant Colling, senior assistant city attorney. Councilmember Klein, no, I don't think there'll be a litigation. The intent is for the city and the, and the State Lands Commission to hire a land surveyor. And the results of that survey determine who owns which part of the airport, if any, and hopefully come to some kind of arrangement, either decide an agreement, a lease from the State Lands Commission is not necessary, or in fact, it is necessary. Those are the, the parameters of the negotiations. And we expect that to be done within the next, I think we said at the outset, 18 months, but I think we intend to move a lot faster than that.
How much is this going to cost?
We have not been given a cost estimate on the land survey, but I know we have hired a surveyor in the past to do some work for us.
Yeah, and we, we actually have done a survey for the airport layout plan for the airport. So we're sharing our survey records with the State Lands Commission, and we're going to work with their surveyors. So I believe our portion is mostly complete. I'm not, I'm not positive of that. We'll find out when we meet with them to, to find out how much more extensive of a survey they will require. But the airport portion was surveyed.
Why do we want to do this?
I, I think Peter can probably address the federal, federal aviation, FAA's concerns about title to the airport because one of the grant assurances requires the city to hold fee title to the airport. That's in doubt because of the State Land Commission's claim to certain parts of the airport that, I guess, historically had belonged to the state when the state became part of the union. Perhaps, Peter, you can take it from the federal angle as to why it's necessary?
Let me, let me put this in a little bit better frame, I think. We've been getting along with the State Lands Commission for, I don't know, 50 years or more on, on this issue. And what would change, depending on this, let's assume for the moment that some of the airport is quote, "owned" quote by the state rather than by the city of Palo Alto. Is there some risk to us? What's going to happen? The State Lands Commission going to say they want some money? Or what, what's going to happen?
Yeah, until we commence negotiations, we weren't aware of this particular issue. But I think this, I think Peter would support our sentiment that the State Lands Commission recognizes that the county and the state weren't aware of the, the legal issues underlying this, the State Lands Commission claim to title to any portion of the property. And again, because in other transactions, the city and the state have agreed to disagree as to who owns the property in the Palo Alto Yacht Harbor a couple of years ago, the parties decided with a little bit of push from the FAA to get this issue resolved before they will be willing to issue us federal funds, so. In other words, the problem still exists. It has always existed. We just weren't aware of it. And the county wasn't really aware of it until recently. Yeah.
I'm not getting any clearer on, on this. We have the same problem with regard to the Baylands.
Councilmember Klein, Peter Kirsch will offer some comments. He may assist you.
Okay.
Councilmember Klein, this is Peter Kirsch from the law firm of Kaplan, Kirsch &amp; Rockwell. Let me explain the situation with the State Lands Commission. And I think it's an exaggeration to call it a dispute. It's really an ambiguity, having to do a title that really stretches back to when California originally became a state. The State Lands Commission and the city have recognized this ambiguity for 40-something years. And up until now, it has been resolved in the following manner. The city believes it has title, and the State Lands Commission is not sure if the city has title. So what the, what the State Lands Commission has done is given a lease to the county for the duration of the period when the county had a lease from the city. And what the State Lands Commission has offered to do is to continue that process going forward. The city is required by federal law, if it is to operate the airport and receive federal grants, it must have two things. First of all, it must have good title to the property, which can either be title or, or a lease. And if it has a lease, the lease must be at least 20 years from the date of the last federal grant. So what that means today, there's only three years left on the State Lands Commission lease. And so the current lease would not be satisfactory to the federal government unless we could prove that we have title. Since we can't prove we have title, we believe we have title. But we can't prove that to the satisfaction of the federal government. The federal government requires essentially we have belt and suspenders. The city believes we have title. The State Lands Commission thinks they may have title. So what we're proposing is that the State Lands Commission is willing to enter into a new lease of roughly 25 years so that we have a window of time in which to resolve the issue. At the end of this survey, if we determine that the city in fact does have fee title as we think it does, the State Lands Commission lease will go away and will be resolved with the issue. If it turns out that the city does not have title, the State Lands Commission has said they will enter into a new lease. They're, they're able to enter into a lease up to 50 years. And they'll enter, enter a new lease that then will give us satisfactory title for the purposes of the federal grant assurances. It's an unusual situation, but it's really mandated by the federal government. We view this as an opportunity to resolve what has really been a, just a ambiguity about the title to the property that stretches back, you know, well over 100 years.
Okay, is it fair to say then that regardless of what happens, we're going to have, either through lease or fee ownership, we're going to have control of the property for the foreseeable future?
That's correct.
And does any of this affect the other lands that we believe we own in the Baylands?
Well, at this point, we are only talking to the State Lands Commission about resolving the issue with regard to the airport. The, the property that the State Lands Commission believes it owns is more extensive, as you might imagine, than the airport. And so as part of that survey, if we learn additional information, that will certainly be useful to that other property. But right now, we're focusing on the, on the boundaries, if you will, of the airport.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your presentation and response to our questions. I'd like to move that the council adopt the staff recommendations as outlined in the staff report.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to commend all of the parties involved, the staff and all of their, the results of the very complex negotiations required with federal, state, and local agencies to reach this point. This is an outcome that we have had strong interest in for some time. And all of the stakeholders and the individuals who've been here tonight have spoke eloquently to the importance of this transfer. And I want to thank everyone for their great work.
Price, Mary Ness, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, I, I do feel kind of deja vu-y. Having overseen that airport for a very long time, I think probably both parties are delighted with what's going to transpire. I just want to have on the record, though, that I have some real concerns about it. I've shared those before. This is not a slam dunk moneymaker. And I'm going to read that back to you sometime in 2017 or 18 because running an airport turns out to not be an easy kind of thing to do. And I'm seeing Ralph out there, and I'll bet Ralph you would nod and smile at that. I have been flying with Ralph. So I, I simply want us to know and expect what this may take. And we discussed this before. And you nodded and smiled and agreed the last time. So, you know, I hope it all goes well as we renegotiate the leases. I hope, you know, that we can spiff that up, and it's a place that even more people want to fly out of. It's a very important airport, as you mentioned earlier tonight, very busy and very critical for emergency work as well. So good luck with it. And I hope it, I hope it goes well for all of us.
Councilmember Burt?
Yes, the staff report briefly spoke about the tower replacement and the runway repaving. And I wasn't quite clear how those costs fit into what we had had in our previous pro forma for amortizing those capital expenses. Where would the funds come from? And how would they be repaid?
So the runway repairs will be paid for with a combination of the FAA grant with a matching share paid for by the county of Santa Clara as part of the transfer agreement. The trailer replacement, we're basically going to bring in a new modular to replace the old modular. That was brought forward to you in the capital budget this year and part of our pro forma projections for hopefully getting into the black and starting in 2018.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scharf?
Thank you. Yeah, we've been looking at this since 2007, I guess. I remember coming to finance committee over and over again over the years. So I'm glad we're finally bringing this to fruition. And, you know, I know it was a lot of hard work. And Ralph, we really appreciate your efforts on this. I know you guys put a lot of time into it. I did just want to go back to the State Lands Commission issue briefly. So what I understood from that is that we're going to hire a surveyor? Is that a joint surveyor? And the surveyor's going to go out and survey the property? Is that, I always thought these legal issues were murky and weren't as simple as just doing a survey. So is that really going to resolve the issue? Or is there, you know, and have we chosen one surveyor? Could reasonable, reasonable surveyors disagree as if I hired my expert witness surveyor and you hired yours? And are we choosing the right one? And are we agreeing on it? Or you make it sound so simple, but everyone tells me this is murky. And are we sure, I'm going to finish my questions. I get them all at once. Are we sure this is not going to negatively impact our other property interests in terms of where we want to put the anaerobic digester possibly, the use of the Baylands, all those type of issues? Are we heading down a path in which we could have huge issues coming out of this?
So I, I know Peter's going to give you the real answer, but if I could just interject, I'm pretty sure that no one at the State Lands Commission wants to operate a local airport.
Councilman, I apologize if I made a murky issue sound simple. Perhaps it's because it's 20 of 12. But it is not simple. It is actually quite murky. The survey is the first piece. And I'll give you, if I can, the crib notes version of a legal issue that we could spend many hours talking about.
I'll give you a call.
Please. When the state, when, when California became a state, California had, the state had trust properties that consisted of tidal, not tidal, but tidal lands. The question is, what was tidal land when California became a state? And what is tidal land today? So the survey is designed for a couple of purposes. One, to find out in fact what's the boundary of what the state currently claims. That's relatively straightforward. And we are proposing to jointly hire a surveyor so that we don't get into dueling survey, surveys. Secondly, once we know what the boundary is today, then we have to do what really amounts to historical research on what the boundary was when California became a state. to historical research on what the boundary was when California became a state. That's quite a bit more, more complicated. It's murkier. It requires going back literally through historic documents. That's why this takes longer than just the time, time it will take to do a survey. At the end of that, if you will, these will be compared. And at that point, then, we will know what the state claimed when California became a state, whether there have been any changes in what the state claims because of sales, the state has in fact sold property, and whether the state sold property that it acquired as part of statehood, and whether the state still has any of that property. That's, that's probably the, what, the two-minute version of what could be much longer. But, but you are absolutely right that this is in fact a murky issue. You're absolutely right that we could have dueling surveyors. But, but let me just make one thing perfectly clear because, because it's, it's important. The State Lands Commission has been extraordinarily helpful. I mean, it, it really deserves repeating that we've been working with the state, with the state, with the county, with the FAA, and the State Lands, and the State Lands Commission staff has really gone way above and beyond the call of duty in trying to find creative solutions to this. So I think it is unfair to suggest in any way that they won't be cooperative and helpful. They are at least as eager as the city to resolve this issue. And they are eager, if the city doesn't want to resolve this issue, to continue the current arrangement.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Well, you just raised an interesting question because if you have to go back to when California became a state, that could be interesting because I'm not sure what year the bay was filled, but a lot of that is landfill. And if California became a state in 1850, I thought all that fill out there happened much later than that. So was there land out there, period?
There are actually two federal statutes that deal with exactly that issue about, about--
Well, good to know.
--the, of the, of the bay and what the state's rights are. And again, without getting into detail of that, those are all issues that we have to work through. What was the, the boundary of the state trust lands at the time of statehood? What changes have been made? What statutes have come in since then to change the state's rights? And obviously, what transfers, to the extent the state made any transfers from the state trust lands?
It defies the thing about Bayland, they're not making any more. Well, we did. So one question, though, is, and I'm not going to be able to put my fingers on it, but isn't there something that says that the city, when it takes over operations of this, that they can't, the word didn't discriminate, whatever the language was, against commercial operators? And then there are restrictions around what, you know, can happen in the vicinity around commercial operations? And so I was thinking about how that might impact the Baylands and the wildlife and birds and that sort of thing because birds are obviously an impediment to flight, I mean, airplane flight. So should that be something we'd be concerned about as a part of this agreement?
So Peter can speak to this as well, but the non-discrimination provision is a standard part of the grant assurances that the FAA requires from all airport sponsors. And many airports do have wild, wildlife, including bird management issues. And so these issues are very familiar. Do you have some specific comments?
Yeah, let me, let me address those two issues separately. The issue of non-discrimination, by federal law, the operator of an airport that receives federal grants can't discriminate, can't unjustly discriminate among commercial operators. Commercial operators does not mean passenger carriers. This airport is not licensed to receive passenger carriers unless the, unless the city decides it wants to. The FAA cannot force you to have commercial passenger operations. Commercial operations means fixed base operators, other users of the airport. There's a tremendous amount of case law as to what it means to unjustly discriminate. But essentially, what it means in many respects is you can't give favoritism. You can't, you can't allow one entity to operate at the airport and not another entity. The, the parameters, if you will, the geographic limits of what the airport is are defined by the city. And so if someone wants to come in and there is space to accommodate them, and they are proposing an operation that's consistent with your rules and regulations and your standards, then in fact, you are required to accommodate them. You're not required to expand the airport. You're not required to do anything beyond the boundaries of the airport in order to accommodate commercial users. Your second question had to do with, with wildlife, which is actually an enormous issue nationwide, really ever since the mirroring on the Hudson a number of years ago. The FAA has paid, paid a lot more attention to that. All airport operators have to have a wildlife hazard assessment plan, which deals with exactly this issue. It is actually less of a problem along the boundary of San Francisco Bay than it is in some areas where you have isolated water. Isolated water tends to attract more birds than if you have a very large body of water where birds can go in many different places. That's, again, an oversimplification, but one of the things the city will need to do is to make a wildlife assessment to determine whether there are any wildlife hazards on or near the airport and how to deal, how to deal with those in a, in a humane and a, in a responsible manner.
Thank you.
All right. I would just like to say one thing that I, I believe I agree with Vice Mayor Niss, that this is going to be tricky for us to make money. And I certainly hope that this was a wise decision to make in 2007 by the city council. So with that, and let's go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously. We have one item left on our agenda, which is Councilmember Questions, Comments, and Announcements. Do we have anything? Councilmember Price.
Yes. Could I ask city manager Keen to give us an update at some point regarding the status of discussion between VTA and Stanford University regarding the Palo Alto Transit Center?
East with, okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Just one is there was a speaker under Oral Communications that spoke about the project on Sherman that is going, has been, I guess, and is going to the ARB. And there was comments made about the mitigated negative deck and when it was made available in relation to when the item was heard, when the item was heard at the ARB, and also that the ARB was setting deadlines for public comments. So I don't know about any of that, but can somebody follow up and make sure that, you know, the public isn't precluded from making comments at any point in time, that there is adequate availability of these documents prior to the ARB meetings? Thank you.
Does anyone else have to, anything to add? And if not, this meeting is adjourned.